I'd like to call to order this meeting of the West Palm Beach City Commission. The date is Monday, January 24, 2022, and the time is 5:00 PM. We will start this meeting out as we always do with a moment of silence. At this time, if we could keep in line the family and friends of a longtime resident and community active advocate and Black historian in our community, Mrs. Avery Jimerson Clark, who passed away on January 7th at the age of 95. A moment of silence, please. Mr. President, could you lead us in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to remind everyone of the rules of civility and decorum of this body. Officials shall be recognized by the chair and shall not interrupt the speaker. Public comment shall be addressed to the City Commission as a whole and not to any individual on the dais or in the audience. Displays of anger, rudeness, ridicule, impatience, lack of respect, and personal attacks are strictly prohibited. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, stamping of feet, whistles, yells, and similar demonstrations should not be permitted. Would also like to remind everyone, we do have a mask mandate. If you're going to be in this room, you need to wear your mask. Please govern yourself accordingly, as offenders may be removed from the meeting. Ms. Johnson, are there any additions, deletions, reorganization of the agenda?
No, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Then let us proceed with the first presentation. But before we go, Ms. Makovich, will you put on your mask, please? Ms. Makovich, will you put on your mask, please?
I'm sorry?
Your mask. You put it on, please.
Yes, you did say you must wear a mask. I'm sorry. You said no exceptions. So I'm gonna put my mask on. Would you please put your mask on?
Thank you. All right, we'll start with the first presentation. Final presentation of 1909 Community Gamification Program for 2021. Ms. De La Rosa. All right, before you begin, Ms. Makovich, will you put your mask on?
Yes, sir. So would you do?
Okay. Officers, we're gonna need to remove her from the meeting. We have a very strict mask mandate. Can I get somebody?
I have to get a consent to some of the commissions.
No, you don't. Let's proceed. We need you to, if you're not gonna put on your mask, we need you to go. Okay, Ms. De La Rosa, you can continue, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, City Commissioners, a city administrator, Rebecca De La Rosa, Economic Development Director. Today I have with me Shayna Ostrovitz, our Executive Director of 1909. We have Pranu Kumar, a recipient of the 1909 Accelerator Program. Elena French Nino, as well as Nick Minaki, who is also with 1909. We have a board member that's also here in addition to, well, we have two board members here, and if you would stand. Yeah, thank you. I appreciate the involvement and the participation of everyone from 1909 to support this final report in front of you today. In front of you today. Together, we will provide you with the results of the latest 1909 Community Gamification Program grant. In this picture, you will see our inspirited group that has been going through the Accelerator Program through 1909, who are contributing to our local economy and driving home innovation by partnering with our local entrepreneurs. We truly are helping to cultivate a community each one of the participants can rely on through support and also encouragement upon their already lucrative business ideas. I want to thank Shayna also for continuing to involve the city as well as the CRA in participating in events throughout the program that allows us to get a chance to meet the participants and also hear their stories along the way. So it truly is remarkable to hear from each one of them. In fact, one of the participants shared with me most recently that they were looking to move, but they did not end up moving because of the community that surrounds them when they're participating in 1909. So it's a true testament of what is offered through this program and through their membership. The quick overview for you, over the last three years, I wanted to at least provide you what some of the results have been, and I'm happy to provide you additional information if you'd like it. But totaling over the last three years, there have been 53 entrepreneurs and cohorts that have been assisted through your guidance. In addition to that, there has been $4.1 million annually generated from these cohorts, contributing to our tax base. In addition to that, there have been 37 jobs generated. I'm going to turn it over to Shayna Ostrovitz to give you additional report details.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. I am very excited to be back in front of you, sharing the results of this program. We were here at the beginning of 2021, talking about the results from the previous year and what we continue to do, and I'm just so honored to be the one who gets to come up and share all of the amazing work that the entrepreneurs in our community have been doing, that we get to support together. So, let me see. It is not moving. Hold, please. Okay. Let me see. No, no, no. I see it moving.
Yes.
Well, let's try.
I'm sorry for the delay.
It's not allowing us to move.
Channel 18, can we get someone in here to help? Okay, looks like we're making progress.
Oh, there it goes. It's just slow. I don't know what's happening. Ah, there we go. Okay. Good thing I wore my glasses. I can see it up here.
I think we have it, Robert. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
All right, so I actually have, as Rebecca mentioned, a one of the participants.
Speak closer to the mic, please.
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you.
One of the participants is here with me today, but we had 18 amazing founders in this program that went through the Accelerator with us, from everything, from music innovation that's being patented, to pet treats, to new virtual racing platforms, to retail platforms, to beautiful readerie that you're gonna hear about, and more. Just a quick background, in case you don't remember about our Accelerator Program. It's a six-month program that's designed to help founders from all different backgrounds develop their ideas into successful businesses. Our real goal is to make sure that the founders are able to develop businesses that are sustainable. We want people to not only have exciting ideas, but to be able to take those ideas and make them into a sustainable business operation that stays here in West Palm Beach, that continues to hire people and continues to thrive. Just the basics of our curriculum, we essentially have over the six months, there's a four-week period for each topic that we cover. We do in-depth work on each topic. The founders go out in the community, they do interviews, they work with mentors across those four weeks, and they come back and present around what they've learned at the end. And then we also have our collab days, which I'll talk a little bit more about, but are hackathon-style days, where they actually get real work created for their businesses. So some of the numbers about the demographics of our cohort, again, one of our goals in partnership with the city, and that is incredibly important to us, is diversity. So as you can see here, in terms of the representation, 61% of our founders represent racial and ethnic diversity groups within our community. Just to have a sense of that, the national average is only 45%. And over 56% of our founders in our program are women. The national average of that is 40%. And why I actually included the 2019 numbers as well is just to show the growth that we have had and the learning that we've had in order to continue to make sure that this program represents our community at large. And what we're trying to do is make sure that we represent the census of community members with our founders in this program. These are some of our amazing mentors. So these are volunteers that come from all over the community to support the founders of these programs. They have backgrounds from marketing, legal, software development, fundraising, financial operations, nonprofit leaders, and these are just incredible humans that spend their time over the six months working with our founders to make sure that they get the support they needed, they need, based on the areas that they need. So just to give you a few examples, we have several of our mentors who have exited tech companies. We have the initial founder of the sports bra. She's actually in the Smithsonian with a patent for the sports bra, and she's worked with several of our companies. We have the IT leader from Office Depot. We have, again, other nonprofit leaders, you name it. It's really amazing, so this is just to show again that the community comes to volunteer and put their time in as well to support this program. And part of the grants we receive help us make sure we can train and support the mentors and make sure that the operations work, so that they can be involved with the founders. So going over again, gamification, which is our unique way to support our founders through these programs, is making sure that we're helping them see the progress and growth throughout the program. So again, what gamification is, is it's activities that really show to engage and influence people, generally on hard things. You usually see it in the fitness world. I'm sure everyone has heard of Peloton. But we have translated that same concept to help people through one of the hardest challenges that is starting a business, where you often don't see results for a very, very long time. So what we wanted to do is make sure we build into our program ways to show them the progress they've made and where they're going. So what do we track in the program? We track persistence points. That means that's people meeting with mentors, that's them going to class, that's them doing presentations, doing all the things that they need to do. Again, it's all the hard work that they put in. It takes a lot. You essentially have to manage yourself, you set your own schedule. Pretty much all of our founders have other jobs. They don't have the luxury of not working while they're building a company. So we want to reward them for the time and effort that they put in to building this company. They also get weekly karma points, which is a way for their fellow cohort participants to acknowledge them for supporting one another. So they can actually allocate their points anonymously to one another, showing, hey, you went out of your way, you supported me, or you did something that I want to acknowledge, and they're given points that way. And then they're also given presentation feedback, so that every single time they get up and present in front of a group, they get immediate anonymous feedback telling them how they did, if they did well, where they can improve, which is an incredible skill set for founders to develop, is ability to present what they're working on in their businesses to public. So this is just a quick snapshot of a few of them. It's a little bit hard to see visually here, but you can just see there's a leaderboard. Again, the presentation scores, where people are often seeing how they're doing compared to the group on a regular basis. And then what is kind of the big aha about this? Well, so we have what's called our collabs, and all of the points at the end of the day give our founders access to our collab events. And just to give you a sense of why this is important, is that on collab events, the founders get anywhere from $10,000 to $40,000 worth of work for their business. That could be app development, website development, graphic design, copywriting, you name it. Often things that cost founders a great deal of money upfront for their businesses. And what happens is that's very limiting for most founders who don't have that type of cash to front for their business. So what we do is we use their points to essentially allocate them teams, volunteers, for our events that complete that work. So they draft partners, make it very fun. Again, it's part of the game. But it's adding up to something really important, which is that they're actually getting the things that they need that would otherwise be barriers for them starting their business. So this was our collab midpoint event, which was a great day. As you can see, we had four new websites launched, we had two functional software applications built, professional photography, UX UI, all the things here, I won't name them all. As you can see in that brown box, we actually had an expert engineer come out and do CAD designs for one of our founders, which is something that can actually be patented. It's very difficult. It would cost tens of thousands of dollars to do on his own, and he got it on that day. So as you can imagine, the growth and opportunity that that provided him to move his business forward. And this was just one of the volunteers, again, to show the impact on the community and why it's so special, what we're doing here in West Palm, and why it's so unique. This was a founder who'd been involved in other entrepreneurial programs. He said, "I believe this has the potential to impact globally how we do innovation. We're really trying to change the game of innovation, make it more equitable, make it so that everybody has an opportunity to build a successful business." So our final collab weekend, this is for the top five founders in the program. Again, teams surrounding them. In that 12 hours, we completed $85,000 worth of work for their businesses, which were e-commerce, websites, pricing, and revenue models, investor pitch decks, product prototypes built. You name it, they got it. So many of them just, again, took them to the next level. That was our winning team. It's very friendly competition, but it inspires a great deal of talented, skilled people to come out and volunteer their time to help all the founders in the program. So what were some of our insights and learning from this year? This is really important. This is probably the most important slide I want to share with you. I'm so proud of the founders that made it through this program, because it was by far the hardest that I've seen for people to get through, and there's many reasons for that. So one is obviously the current world affairs fatigue. There is so much going on that people have to deal with. Most of our founders are parents, they have kids, they have family members. They're dealing with everything going on with the economy and political divides, COVID, just like all of us are. But again, most of them are not only trying to balance a job and starting a business and all of that. So, you know, we could see very much the impact of that. And again, more work being done by less people. So again, if our founders have multiple jobs, they're running from whatever their job is during the day to come take our class at night at 6:00 PM, trying to balance all of that. Most of them are being asked to work extra hours at the jobs that they have, so there is additional pressure there that wasn't there in the past for many of the founders in the group. And then just stress, mental health concerns, family concerns are at an all-time high. And there was just a need for extra mentorship and support for the program. So again, we just realized that this year, for everyone, not just founders in our program, was exceptionally challenging, and trying to do something like start a business is already hard. And so there was just much more additional layers that we essentially adapt for and will continue to adapt for to make sure that our founders are supported. But needless to say, we had a very successful program, and we saw 16 of our participants graduate. They were so happy. Here are some of the pictures here. And one of the most beautiful things is these founders develop really strong relationships in the program with other founders that they probably would never even know, in different industries, from different backgrounds, all with different skill sets, and most of these relationships will last for life. And that's really important in the business community, because you need to have other business owners, other support systems that help you as you move along. So just a few quick testimonials. I'm so glad I participated. I recommend it to anyone to take themselves and their ideas to the next level. I love spending time with the cohort and trainers. I've learned so much, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to contribute. I'm excited to continue and grow in this space with people who are passionate about their missions. My favorite part was the camaraderie of the other participants in the cohort. It's nice to know you're not alone and be able to share freely with people who understand what you're going through. Again, something so special about this program, the gamification piece, what you support, and that's why we appreciate it so much, because people could potentially go online and try to learn about business, but it's not the same. It's not the same as working with your community, getting support and resources from other business leaders in your community as you move forward. And the larger impact, as of course we know, entrepreneurship has proven to lead to higher wages while simultaneously benefiting the community. You know, when these businesses are created, they're already creating jobs, they're circulating more money here, and they're pulling money from other areas as well, because they're continuing to sell products, develop technologies, again, hire people, and bring talent here. So without further ado, I much prefer to have our founders speak, because they're the real testament to what is going on here in this community. So I'd like to welcome Pranu Kumar, who is one of our participants and the founder of Rohy's Readerie. And let me see if I can pull this up for you. Probably can't. Let's see. Oh, thank you. You're very welcome.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Pranu Kumar, and I am a proud Konkani immigrant, a mother, and a proud educator committed to early childhood and elementary education. Being seen and heard is so close to being loved, that for the average person, they are almost indistinguishable. Sean Hardnett, founder of the Statesman Academy for Boys in DC. When I was two, my family and I moved from India to the deep south, Texas, to be exact. When I was 10, I was told that I wasn't smart, but I worked hard. I couldn't read or write well, but it was probably because English was my second language. By the age of 15, I began to feel isolated, depressed, called a terrorist, while I watched cops surround my family due to suspicious phone calls post-9/11. By the age of 23, I attempted suicide, feeling isolated, feeling depressed, feeling lost, not feeling valued. At 30, I began to reflect on experiences, but still not understanding why, not having a community, trying to put the pieces together, what were my triggers? And then at 36, holding my 14-month-old daughter in Rohy's Readerie and being told to go back to where I came from, that me, that we, did not belong there. I say this all because the lack of feeling seen, feeling valued, feeling heard, feeling belonged, feeling loved at any age, no matter what, is destructive to one's soul.
I'm sorry, there seems to be a little bit of a delay. Would you mind continuing?
Yeah, no, no problem. And this is why we have Rohy's Readerie. It's a social justice-driven children's bookstore and learning center. It's committed to really honoring the stories of historically marginalized communities, whether it is Black, Indigenous, Asian, Arab, Latinx, Pacific Islander, the LGBTQ community, neurodiverse community, and disability community. This space is to honor those stories through the books. That is solely what the books are about. But more than just that, it's the joyful, everyday stories.
Hold on for a minute. We may have someone who can help you with your slides.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mayor. The slides don't seem to be advancing.
Okay.
We also offer free educational programming for children and adults. So whether it is gardening, cooking, dancing, whether it is honoring holidays like Diwali, this space is meant for every child and adult to be seen and valued. In the slides, you'd be able to see pictures of our cozy reading corner, our storytelling stage, a sensory corner for children to meet every single need, and an adult section, because we too know that adults need love, too. On the next slide, you would have been able to see beautiful pictures of the community.
I'm so sorry.
No, it's fine. You'd be able to see beautiful faces of our community. And I could tell you the demographics of these communities who were honored to serve, but instead, you'd be seeing the faces. There is a story behind each one. There is honesty, there is truth, there is empowerment, there is accessibility to a safe space. There is a commitment to safety of each one and each other. Now, why the accelerator? It's a great question, because prior to that, it was really my daughter and my husband and I working on this project the entire time, 24/7 together. This was my new step from education into entrepreneurship. And being able to do that alone during a pandemic with a newborn was no easy task. So it was my husband and I looking and researching and doing everything that we could to figure out how to build something that we felt so passionate around, diversity, equity, and inclusion. So three things that really brought me to the accelerator. Authenticity, growth, and ultimately, human connection. So when I think about authenticity, I've participated as an educator in fellowships that are focused around empowerment and identity-driven learning in Seattle, in Harlem, in South Bronx, and in New Orleans. But oftentimes, those are national fellowships. What I loved about 1909 was that it was a local fellowship that really was committed to creating meaningful relationships with the community. How do you meet the needs of the community? How do you also ensure that the voice is at the forefront? Another thing was that isolation in any space, like we know from the past few years, can be scary. And so being able to have that space with this Accelerator Program, I knew would allow for personal and professional growth. And ultimately, human connection. Moving here a year and a half ago was culturally and socially hard for me. Finding a safe space also as a woman of color can be additionally hard. And so 1909 gave me that confidence, the people in this space gave me that confidence to pursue my dreams and the passion for what I believed in. And so what did I learn from this experience? Flexibility, following my instincts, and also my worth. Flexibility in changing to meet the community where they are and where I am, and know that when both are in sync, that all people thrive. And then instincts. If it feels like a no, just say no. My time is valuable. And also thinking about monetary time and worth. Prioritizing family seems to be a revolutionary act, unfortunately, these days. And for me, I am committed to doing that, because I've learned that when I do, I'm ultimately serving the mission of honoring the bravery and courage of those who came before me and took the time to do so. And so the progress of Rohy's Readerie in now seven months of being open. We've been featured in over 15 publications, both nationally, internationally, and locally. I've developed over 40 partnerships with people all over the country, not just locally, but most importantly, have been locally. I've had 1,100 participants and brought people together for over 100 free events that I have offered within the Readerie. And that's due to really building loving community relationships. Most of these participants end up coming back for at least two events. Over 5,000 books that are of historically marginalized communities have been distributed within the community as well, whether it's donations, sponsorship, or sales in the Readery. And we've made over 63,000 in sales. Ultimately, I've also been able to work on the piece that I also feel passionate about, being in the schools and the classroom and teaching. And I've seen over a 600% increase in my consulting services around diversity, equity, inclusion, and anti-racism work for schools that are committed to this. And so one thing that I'm really committed to for the future is making sure that we continue this work with the community and building it. So whether it's an e-commerce strategy, being able to receive two grants at least in the community, and also to be able to pay myself and hire someone. But ultimately, and most importantly, is to make my ancestors proud. Rohy's Readery is named after my grandmother, Rohini Rao, who was an education activist who was committed to children's rights in India. She fought for the emancipation of women's rights and also fought during a time where women, especially during colonized India, were not even allowed to speak. So I really hope that in this sense, not only am I able to build out this space, but honor her and those who have come before us, taking back that stolen time that they once put in for this courage to do this work. And ultimately, trying to be a good ancestor for my daughters, my daughter, who is 15 months old, who is also named Rohini, and my next little girl that's on the way in two months. So I thank you for your time and listening to Rohy's Readery story. We are located in downtown West Palm in the square. And if you have any questions or any thoughts, I'd be so happy to answer, but I hope you will visit us.
Don't go, don't go, don't go, don't go.
Thank you.
First of all, thank you for sharing in a very candid way your story. What brought you to West Palm Beach or Palm Beach County?
My husband actually grew up in the Palm Beach County area, and so a job brought him back here. And so it was an opportunity for me to grow in the education space here.
Our community is enriched by your presence and by your business. If you could give us a copy of the PowerPoint, I'd love to, love to see it later. But what an amazing story.
Thank you.
Questions, comments, Commissioner Shoff?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you. I just want to say, as the ant of two women of color, some of our favorite bedtime stories are Feminist Baby, Big Hair Don't Care. Love your genre. So I can't wait to come and visit your Readery and learn more about it. So congratulations to you and congratulations to 1909 on such a successful program.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Commissioner Lambert.
I just wanted to say thank you so much for sharing your story. We see you, we hear you, and we are so grateful that you are in our city of West Palm Beach. And thank you to 1909 for fostering these types of relationships. The stories that you shared, in addition to this story, the mentorship that's available. I know so many businesses and so many business people who want to help, but often they don't know how to do it. And I have heard from those mentors how much they get from giving to these business owners. So thank you so much for doing that, and I'm excited to have heard your results today. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other... But I do want to hear more from 19. I have a couple of questions. Thank you again for sharing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pranu. It has been incredible to be a part of the journey of someone like Pranu and our other founders in this community because we just have exceptionally smart, talented, creative people that have amazing ideas. And our job is to just really foster what they're trying to do and help them bring it to life. I am not going to try to go back to the slides, but I just wanted to share that as part, again, of this program that we just started in 2021 and what our part of our agreement was, was that, you know, we really don't want just to leave the founders that graduate from our programs on their own. We see how big of a support system we can create and what that means and the opportunity for resources. So we did launch our graduate program this year. It had multiple founders from 2019 and 2020 join that program. And now all the founders from 2021 will be able to come into that program where we meet on a monthly basis, continue to provide, provide support and guidance and resources to them. And we actually just officially opened our 2022 applications for this year's accelerator program, which will launch in May, and we'll make sure to provide that to all of you. But just wanted to say thank you again so much for your support and allowing us to offer these programs to the amazing people in our community and continue to support businesses like Pranu's, as well as so many of the others we work with. We greatly appreciate it.
Well, thank you. And it's, it's an honor to be part of and invest in that program. I applaud you for staying true. I remember when you all first came in, I told you I was quite interested in diversity. And you guys have held true to that. And I'm a strong believer that it's through programs like yours and other entrepreneurial programs that that is how we will close the wealth gap between the races. So I, thank you. Quick question for you. Do you have statistics on how many people that have graduated that have participated in your program are either residents of or have their businesses located in West Palm Beach, in the city itself?
Yes, I do, and I will share that with you. I don't think I'm going to be able to do it, but... Can I, I, can I share that with you?
Oh, no, please, yes.
Okay.
Well, I say that, hopefully the technology will like it.
So when we, they go through the program, all of them actually either have their businesses here or end up locating their businesses here. So all of those, and I also have statistics of those that are still in business, again, how many jobs they've hired, how many employees they've hired, as well as how much they have made in income. But all of the businesses that are still in business are here in West Palm.
Oh, fantastic. And you'll be able to share your slide deck with, your deck with us as well, since the technology wasn't working?
Absolutely.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Oh, Commissioner Fox, yes.
Thank you so much for this presentation. This is fabulous for our city. You mentioned that, that the next program will be launching in May.
Yes.
Can you give us a little bit more of the details about how someone would look into that and do the application process?
Absolutely, yes. And I can share the applications with you. So we'll have the applications open until March 18th. And anyone can go onto our website and apply. It's essentially their basic business information, business plan. And then we go through an interview process that includes our facilitators, mentors, and other leaders in the community to essentially select around 15 founders for the program. So last year, we got about 60 applicants, just to give you like a sense of...
60, 60-year-olds?
60, yes. And we, and we usually announce around the end of April to start in the end of May. Does that answer the details you needed? Okay, perfect.
Did you have 100% graduation rate from those who participated?
We actually did not. We did lose a founder. So she was a grandmother who was starting her new career, and her daughter, whose husband was overseas, has a baby and was not able to come home because of COVID. And so she decided to put her business on pause and take care of the little one with her. But she's still heavily involved. Her name is Beth and wanted to continue on the program. But that, that happens where, you know, life just sometimes gets in the way.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anything else? Well, again, thank you very much, and hopefully we will have the opportunity to reinvest. And I see it as an investment and not just a contribution because you clearly are giving us a return on our dollars.
Absolutely.
And human capital as well. And so thank you. Thank you for the program. It's great. And thank you for the update. It's great to hear the, the, the progress that's been made, and thank you for sharing your story.
Yes, thank you so much. Thank you again for the support. We appreciate it.
Okay, now it's time to move to the consent calendar. Item 7.1 through... 7.13. Any, do we have any cards on consent? Okay. Any questions on consent, comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move approval of the consent calendar.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved in second at discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like, sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We will now turn to item 8.1. Resolution number 19-22 granting face of the city approval for the artwork entitled Aqua de Vida by local artist Gregory Dur as part of the city's initiative to raise awareness on the importance of its stormwater inlets. Sibylle, is that you?
He's there. He's rebooting the...
Oh, okay. All right.
We just have to wait a second.
Okay.
Thank you. Hi, Sibylle Welton, Minister of Public Art and Culture. Okay, making sure that you can see it. So I'm here to present today the Public Utilities, Public Works Sustainability Approach Art Life to Partner in Order to Bring Public Awareness Visually, Use Public Art as a Conduit to Raise Awareness for the Stormwater Inlets. We decided, we have a lot of stormwater inlets in the city, and I think it was something into the thousands, and I was like, oh, I don't know if I can do that. So we decided to focus on Clemata Street, starting at the waterfront and making our way to the 400 block. And what we did is we decided to directly invite a local artist, Gregory Dur, who does a lot of environmental art, and he'll talk about his work. And we went through and selected artwork, excuse me, stormwater inlets, specifically that were close to a restaurant or easy to come so they can visually look at it and so, and also that parking wouldn't happen. Now, this whole event is going to happen Saturday. It's already set Saturday, February 5th, during the green market, and I invite you guys all to come out and see it. And the goal is, as I said again, to raise the awareness that really our stormwater inlets are significant, and anything that goes down that drain goes right back to us. So we need to keep it clean. The artist was asked to not only make a really colorful design that would attract people, but also to bring four key slogans into it, which was trash in the streets, pollute what we eat, be the solution of water pollution, keep it clean, and protect our waterways. So the stormwater inlets that were chosen, as you can see, start at the waterfront and make their way down. And during the one-day public art event, volunteers will help Gregory Dur install his design. It's more of like a paint by numbers. And now I'm going to introduce you to Gregory Dur. He'll talk about his artwork and how he was inspired to do this.
Aqua de Vida, that's Water of Life?
Yes.
Yes. Hi, I'm Gregory Dur. I'm the visual artist who created the design that you see right there. Also, I'm going to be kind of like guiding everyone as they paint the day of. So Aqua de Vida, Water of Life, I wanted to keep it really simple because, of course, Florida, it's a melting pot, so not everybody's going to be able to speak English. So I wanted it to relate to anybody, no matter their language, their age. I just wanted something that was beautiful and reminded people of pure water and what it could be or what it has been in the past. And it's a very heavy subject, so I didn't want to also be too preachy. And I wanted it to be beautiful and blend in with the city and not fight what we already have going. So I, I wanted all of that kind of encompassing in one. So I felt being simple, maybe an abstraction that reminded us of water, the fish, keeping it also a little bit abstract, you could tell what it is. It's just a reminder because I don't even think a lot of people are really aware what stormwater is. So instead of going that route of making this whole, like, deep, deep, deep meaning thing, I wanted it to just be simple. You can get it. And, you know, bring awareness to it, not so much, you know, try to teach a lesson.
You can go down to get to your next slide.
They're all very similar. I wanted to keep it that way. So, because a lot of these people are inexperienced painters, so I wanted to make sure that they could paint it and maybe not get upset and do a good job. Again, I think the, the more simple art ideas are usually the best, at least to me. That's it.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you. Very bright.
Is there, if there's any questions about the design or the day of?
Questions? Anyone? Commissioner Lambert.
Thank you so much. I think that this is a worthy project, and I am grateful to see us helping to serve as a public service announcement to our residents and visitors. Just curious, the paint that we're using, you know, I don't know how that works. I presume we want all of it to stay there, but it, are we using a certain kind of paint that is friendly to the environment so that if it chips off and goes into there, that we're not causing pollution?
Yeah, so that's a big thing. A lot of my art, I didn't really explain this, but it all has to do with recycling and conservation. So I use materials that could fall apart or biodegrade. I do that a lot. And I need to make sure that they're archival because if I make a public sculpture or a painting and it biodegrades and then goes right into the stormwater, it kind of defeats the purpose. So I go out of my way to buy the very, very expensive exterior paint. And then we're going to go as far as to coat it with a non-slip so that if people walk on it, because you know, painted surface can be very slippery. So yes, we've, we've thought of that as well.
Well, thank you very much. I think that it's these small steps that help people to keep anti-pollution messages in mind that maybe then lead to larger steps in the future. Thank you.
And I also think that, I agree, I think that it also needs to not be so, I keep harping on it, but preachy because it's a heavy subject. And instead of maybe not telling people, hey, don't you do that, I think it's better to just say, hey, this is happening, so just please be aware of it, you know?
Thank you. Sibylle, what about the maintenance of these as the years go by? Do we have an understanding or...
We have, we're going for five years, and then we'll revisit it and see where we're at.
All right, so it will last for five years or we have...
Yes, it'll last for five years. But if anything would happen in between, any, anything that we don't like, then the art life, our repair and maintenance budget would take care of it.
Okay, very good. Any other questions? Commissioner Fox?
Thank you so much. I think this is really cool. I'm looking forward to being there on that day. I just was curious if there's any kind of communication messaging that will be near any of these for anyone who's not watching right now and might want more of the background of why we're doing this. I'm just wondering if we're communicating in some way.
We're working with the communications department, putting out this on social media, media advisory. So we're putting the word out.
Okay. Commissioner Shoff?
Thank you, Mayor, and, and thank you, Sibylle, for bringing this forward. I think it's a great project and certainly a great subject from the Sustainability Committee liaison over here. I know it's, it's a very exciting subject to try to highlight this, and especially through art. The synergies in our departments are really fantastic. As we look, there's, there's a lot of this going on Clemata Street. Is there any room that we could take one or two and sprinkle them throughout the city? So that way, we have maybe one in the north end, one in the south end, one out west, and maybe connect it so that way, as people see that in their community, they know to go see sort of the main artwork downtown.
Sure. I, I think we could get through this one, and I think utilities would be very happy for that. And I don't see why not.
That'd be great. I think it would be a great expansion program. So that way, it brings actually the, the walking mural in someone else's neighborhood to know that there's more of these going on downtown. So really great, fabulous artwork. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Excellent presentation. Thank you both.
Thank you.
We don't really require you to vote on that. Yes, we do. All right, so if there are no other comments, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number 19-22.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved in second at discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like, sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 8.2, resolution number 23-22. Resolution number twenty-three dash twenty-two, creating the mayor's elementary education grant program in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars. Ms. Delarosa, Economic Development Director.
Thank you, Mayor. Hope to have better luck these slides. Again, good afternoon. Thank you, Rebecca Delarosa, Economic Development Director, here to present the creation and also ask for your approval of resolution number twenty-three dash twenty-two, creating the mayor's elementary education program. First and foremost, I wanted to provide you a brief background. Through your approval and a study that was completed for the economic, excuse me, for the Economic Development Department. In addition to that, the economic development plan of goal number one has been accomplished through the efforts of this elementary grant program. In addition to that, the city, along with the mayor, the CRA and the Economic Development Department came together to help develop strategies that would address our education and the perception of education in the city of West Palm through the Business Development Board of Palm Beach County Education Committee. In addition to that, of course, through our efforts, we want to also help sustain and recruit our companies and continue to provide them with the necessary needs and hear each company out when they have certain requests. So this education grant certainly achieves that. The overview of the guidelines that have been presented to you will help achieve and accomplish reaching the students within the lowest twenty-five percentile for reading and math. And you'll see the eleven elementary schools represented on the slide. With a total of thirty-three thousand dollars that has been budgeted, the economic development contribution and is fully budgeted for twenty-five thousand. In the coming weeks, the CRA will also come in front of you for an additional eight thousand dollars totaling the thirty-three thousand, allowing for awards to go to each school for three thousand dollars each. I simply am seeking your approval again for the creation of the education elementary grant program to further enhance the performance of students attending elementary school in the city of West Palm Beach. Mayor, would you like to make any additional remarks?
No, Commissioners, I, I know this may seem like a paltry amount, three thousand dollars per school, but we had to start somewhere. And hopefully in future budget years, we will be able to allocate more. We're hoping to get some innovative grant requests from each of the schools themselves and maybe there will be programs that come out of that that could be funded, if not by the city, certainly maybe the, the private sector. But I, I wanted to start somewhere. Also, we're going to have the Education Advisory Committee process, review the applications and, and make recommendations going forward. So this is a first step. It, it's not the end, but I did want to set some money aside from this year's budget to, for, for this purpose. So hopefully it will garner your approval. President Paduzzi and then Commissioner Lambert.
Thank you, Mayor. I think this is an excellent program. I'm really happy to hear that we're utilizing one of our advisory committees to assist in this process. That's an excellent use, I think, of their, of their time and their, you know, their efforts. One thing in here, I see that it says that they're eligible to apply for up to three thousand dollars, but since we've added this additional money, is it anticipated that each will just simply be given it? Or do they still have to apply?
They still must apply, yes. And it will go through the advisory committee for review.
Okay, so I guess it's just a matter of getting the word out, letting them know that it's available and hopefully all of the eleven elementary schools within our city will apply.
That's correct. And most recently, I have had a conversation with the Chief of Staff of the superintendent and so we'll continue those conversations.
Thank you.
And, and the thinking was, we wanted to encourage, incentivize, you know, innovative thinking, you know, they, they know where their best is, rather than just giving it to them. We wanted them to come to us and tell us what they would do with the money and hopefully it will inspire some creativity in their thinking. Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you so much, Mayor. Thank you, Rebecca, for bringing this forward. I am very excited to see this as something that I have hoped that we would bring to the city and I know that the Educa, the Education Committee is very pleased to see this on the agenda tonight as well and they're looking forward to being a part of it. And I know that we've had some discussions on this day, us, about what is the city's role in education and supporting education? And I realize we have a very robust school district, but knowing how much our public schools affect our residents and whether or not they stay here, whether or not they move here, is heavily related to the public schools that they're zoned for. So thank you for this. I am extremely supportive and hope that it will pass and that it will continue to flourish and we can grow it each year. I was curious if our, our, our account at the Community Foundation was still open, that we had opened earlier? And if, if residents or stakeholders wanted to contribute to a fund to maybe match this with the city, if that is still a possibility or if that count was closed. I know it was open for COVID purposes.
We can look into that, Commissioner, as, as, as a next step. I'll talk to legal to see what might be required. We have to be careful from an ethics standpoint because we don't want to create the perception that we're soliciting these funds in exchange for, you know, a certain vote or anything like that. So. But I'll look into it and see if there's a way that we could do it without violating any, any ethical requirements or legal requirements. But we'll certainly move ahead as rapidly as possible, at least this portion of it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Shou.
Thank you, Mayor, and, and thank you to Mayor and staff and Rebecca for bringing this item forward. To Commissioner Lambert's point, education is an economic issue, a hundred percent. People move to neighborhoods in which they can put their children in school, hands down, number one reason to come. And I think this is a really great first start. We do have to start somewhere. As we get continued funding, you know, we just had a great presentation about a readery that allowed us to see what some of the other programs within our city are doing. Great opportunity for a partnership to, you know, have a book of the month and especially important, I think, our children that don't come from typically diverse communities to read about diversity. You know, that's how we learn and I think that checks a lot of boxes throughout this program. So, you know, great first start. Kudos to you. Looking forward to what comes next. Thanks.
Commissioner Warren?
Just one quick question. Is Seminole Trails Elementary outside of this, it's not in West Palm Beach, in our incorporated?
It's in West Palm Beach. These are all city schools.
City of West Palm Beach? That's a county?
That's county. Okay.
Any other, President Paduzzi?
I have a follow-up along that same lines, line. I know that there's a school that is on the south side of Okeechobee that's technically right outside of the city, but it serves city residents. Almost all of the children that go there are city residents. Have we looked at that? Just to make sure that all of our residents, especially, I think it may only be in District Four where we have that issue where kids are being sent to a school that's right outside of the city limits, but it's still servicing city students.
Well, our priority was to service this, to, to work with the schools in West Palm Beach. I get your point that there may be students going to schools outside of the city who reside in West Palm. But this goes back to my earlier comment, we needed to start somewhere. And as this program grows, which hopefully it will, we may be able to expand it to, to, to look at that possibility. But I certainly wanted to cover the eleven elementary schools in our city and make sure that they had first dibs, if you will.
If I could.
Madam, Madam City Administrator?
Thank you. You know, just in terms of the city's ability to get this program off the ground and bring twenty-five thousand dollars to the table. You know, I think that it really speaks volumes to the mayor and our Economic Development Director as well as this board's commitment to education. When you put it in the context of where we were just one short year ago in FY twenty, we had a seven million dollar cut in the general fund. So in a very short span of time, the next year, we were able to find funding to start putting back some of the programs that this board wants to see. So from my perspective, finding twenty-five thousand dollars is a pretty big deal and I don't want that to be lost on this board. Thank you.
Point well taken. Any other, Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. Since this was generated out of the Department of Economic Development, Rebecca or Mayor, will it be that department's responsibility to assist the committee in the selection process? Will you be the partner to the committee in that process?
Oh, she, she will be in the loop. I mean, I, I don't want you to, that, she won't be the staff person handling all work for the Education Advisory Committee, but certainly will be my representative in terms of looking and reviewing, working with the advisory committee and looking at what, at the work product on this particular program.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments? We do have one card, Michael Cleveland.
Good evening, everyone, to all present. Welcome to a new year. I do have a couple of issues with the, the grant proposal. First of all, the red tape continues to go on in just about every aspect of government. I understand we have to account for every dollar that's spent, but if we are really serious to understand the needs of supplies and what have you for students, particularly in the elementary, that I can understand why they have to have, submit an application with, with certain qualifications to pass. I just feel that, you know, you just take the application, give them the money, whatever you want to give them. They're all going to apply for probably three thousand. You know, that goes without saying. They probably need more than that. But if you really, I mean, from my standpoint of view, if I was going to give some money to kids, they don't have to ask me nothing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments, questions? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move approval of resolution number twenty-three dash two-two.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved in second discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like, sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. There's, thank you, City Commissioners and City Administrator.
Okay, item eight point three. Resolution number twenty-six dash twenty-two, accepting grant funding of four hundred fifty thousand dollars from the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity to be used to fund a sea level rise study to be conducted by Florida Atlantic University and authorizing execution of the grant agreement. Resolution number twenty-seven dash twenty-two, approving an agreement with Florida Atlantic University to conduct the visualizing sea level study. And resolution number thirty dash twenty-two F, receives and appropriates grant funds and provides general fund, light on and revenue and expenditure to record the credit to reclassify a portion of personnel costs for development services, planning personnel efforts to be paid by the grant. Mr. Ruge?
Thank you, Mayor. City Commissioners, Chris Ruge, Executive Director of the Community Redevelopment Agency. This item is being brought to you by me as a project that I, I've sort of kept as I've journeyed from the economic development work with the city over now to the CRA. Go back in time with me a little bit. We approved a, a grant opportunity to pursue with the Department of Economic Opportunity for CDBG dollars that were known as Rebuild Florida General Planning Support Program. The federal government sent down about twenty million dollars worth of grants that the Department of Economic Opportunity distributed in the form of grants for planning purposes to local governments, educational institutions, so on and so forth, for the purposes of updating our plans. So during that time, as you all know, we have many projects and a great partnership with Florida Atlantic University. And one of the professors down there, who is also a good friend and resident of the city of West Palm Beach, Dr. John Rene, approached me at the time as Economic Development Director and said, hey, there's this really great opportunity where we can pursue this planning grant and I have a concept where we can actually use technology to do virtual simulations to understand how sea level rise may impact the city of West Palm Beach. What do you think? And of course, we have a pretty standard and ongoing policy where we take opportunities like this to partner with our local universities, especially in pursuing grants because they chase grants a lot and we have sort of the great laboratory as a city to really understand and try out technologies and planning opportunities and partner with our local universities. So, long story short, it was we were successful in achieving that grant. And over many months, we have been working with the state of Florida on developing that agreement. And just as a refresher, I thought it was important for Dr. Rene to come up and actually just revisit the item because this solidifies the agreement with the state of Florida so that we can bring those four hundred and fifty thousand dollars back to the city of West Palm Beach, partner with Florida Atlantic University, get that information and then assess it and understand how we can update our plans according to that great information that Dr. Rene and his team will put together for us. So with that, Mayor, I would like to turn it over to Dr. Rene to go over what is included in this planning grant that we will, we will be pursuing.
Fantastic. Please.
Thank you very much, Chris, and good evening, Mayor and council members. I am John Rene. I'm a resident of West Palm Beach. I'm a professor at Florida Atlantic University. I direct the Center for Urban Environmental Solutions, which has been around for fifty years, making a difference in South Florida. And we, this project builds upon some research and community engagement that we have conducted. We started in Fort Lauderdale and we also completed a project recently in Waikiki, Honolulu. So the project, the purpose of this particular project, as Chris indicated, is to build upon the opportunity that the state of Florida provided by providing grants to look at community development block grants for mitigating against resilience and, and sea level rise in the future. Our project will be led by myself with my colleague Serena Herman and we are partnering with the Virtual Human Interaction Lab at Stanford University, which is one of the leading virtual reality labs in the world, along with a, one of the most innovative companies in this space called Virtual Planet Technologies. Others on our team include a professor, Fred Bletcher, from engineering and Kathleen Freeman, Catherine Freeman from Florida Atlantic University. And then we will have some local consultants, Jonathan Payne from Payne Productions, Amir Kalini and Chen Mo and Associates, who are leading the redevelopment of Curry Park. Our study area for this project is the northern end neighborhoods located along the intercoastal area that is subject to sea level rise flooding in the distant future. And this right here is the federal government's map, the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration's official maps of what sea level rise impact could be if sea level rise were to rise by three feet. And the University of Florida has a wonderful website. NOAA has a great website. There's a whole bunch of resources where you can view these maps. This is what it would look like with four feet. The problem that we've discovered in our work is that people don't really understand how to read maps. And what we did, and this is a image from our, our virtual reality model on Las Olas Boulevard in Fort Lauderdale, is to take this two-dimensional data and to model it in a three-dimensional way and then to meet with the residents that are impacted. Those could be. that are impacted. Those could be residents, business owners, you know, and so in our context here in West Palm Beach, we are going to be meeting with a very diverse set of community members across the north end. This isn't just the peoples whose properties might be flooded. This includes peoples whose lives may be disrupted. So, that is a broader set of individuals than just the property owners or residents. I'd like to show you this two-minute video here to be able to demonstrate the new technology that we will be embedding in this particular project, which comes from the Virtual Planet Technologies and working with Stanford University. Give me one second while I load this. The burning of coal, oil, and natural gas all produce greenhouse gas that forms a blanket around the earth. This blanket traps heat, causing global temperatures to rise, which can intensify severe weather patterns. But also cause glaciers and ice sheets to melt, seawater to expand, which both raise sea levels. These changes will create major disruptions for our planet and impact coastal communities in many ways. Santa Cruz will experience rising sea levels and possibly increase coastal storms, causing more frequent and intense coastal flooding and beach and bluff erosion. See that water filling in? The king tide's the highest tide of the year in the winter of 2019, brought the water line almost to the street. While we are uncertain when sea level rise will reach 2.4 feet, it is expected to come well before the end of the century. Beach Street, which runs in front of the Santa Cruz Beach Boardwalk, could be completely flooded, and the ocean may make its way close to downtown. Can you imagine wading through the streets with water up to your knees? So, what can the city do? The city is currently evaluating how it can respond to sea level rise and coastal erosion by completing technical studies and talking with residents. We could allow the bluffs to continue to erode and gradually move the pedestrian path and roadway further inland. We could also gradually relocate buildings and infrastructure further inland. We could install more armoring, like rip wrapper seawalls, to protect the infrastructure and development backing the beaches, but armoring doesn't allow the beach to migrate back, and eventually the beach will be lost. Other options, including adding more sand to the beach or trying to create a living shoreline. Welcome to the Sea Level Rise Explorer. It's great to have you here. Do you know how I get this presentation back on? Just go to Presentation Month? Thank you. I'm almost done. So, we'll be one of the first communities that, you know, in the east coast or southeast coast that will utilize this technology. We're going to build the exact same technology that you just saw. It will be accessible and, you know, be able to view through virtual reality glasses, but you'll also be able to view it in two dimensions, like you saw here. And our intention is to kind of create some kiosks. We may have it maybe here in City Hall or at the library, or at community centers or schools in the area. The project is expected to commence in February of next month and take about a year and a half. There are, in essence, four phases to the project. One is to kind of finalize the interaction that you saw, to develop the multi-platform engagement, working with colleagues at Stanford and with Virtual Planet and at FAU, to engage the community, and then to take all of the input that we receive and prepare that into a planning and policy memo to provide to you all for your future planning purposes, which is a requirement of the reason why the state of Florida is giving these funds to the city, is to develop future plans. So, with that said, I want to thank you for your consideration and happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much for that presentation. That is quite eye-opening when you see what's going on in Santa Cruz, and we'll probably have similar results even for our city, but thank you. Questions, comments? Anything for staff? If not, I'll entertain a motion. Several motions, actually, or just one motion?
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 26-22, Resolution Number 27-22, and Resolution Number 30-22F.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Discussion. All right, hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Professor. All right, we go into the public hearing portion of our meeting. Item 9.1, public hearing and first reading of ordinance number 4976-21 regarding a city-initiated text amendment to the city code of ordinances at Chapter 78, Article 6, special events, and Chapter 94, Section 94-40712, temporary signs for special non-commercial events to amend the code provisions relating to special event permits on public and private property. Mr. Fauna?
Good evening, Mayor. Commissioners, Armando Fauna, Assistant City Administrator. So, for some time now, we've been discussing the possibility of adjusting and amending our code of ordinance when it comes to special events, particularly in light of some complaints we had gotten in the past about events that are being held in residential neighborhoods. And so, we've been looking at this code now for well over a year in terms of updating it. I wanted to come back with you with some of the changes we're recommending to the code. I want to thank Development Services, Department, our Community Events Division, and also our legal team for helping out with this change, or these changes, I should say. So, let's just do some quick definitions on what a special event is and what types of permits there are. We have special event permits for public property, also for private property, and then neighborhood block parties, and I'll get into each one of these in a little bit. And then there's also, this also does some slight amendments to how those public events and private events that are, special events are advertised with signage. There are signage permits required as well when you advertise one of these events. So, a special event, the definition for it under the ordinance is an organized or planned assembly of persons that have a common purpose. And here you have some of the, kind of the points of what constitutes a special event. So, requiring a street closure, detour, utilizing city property or city resources above normal use, intended to attract 50 or more participants, could be gated or fenced, or ticketed event, and just things that are outside, use of the public right-of-way outside of the customary use that you would see on a day-to-day basis, and the use of resources, and then any other criteria that may be deemed by the mayor as well. So, let's start with the public property events and the permits for those. And I'm not going to get into a lot of detail, because we are an event city. We've been holding events for a very long time. We've got this pretty down in terms of how we apply the application for the private, public events and how we approve those. The one change I did want to point out is the bring-your-own-bottle kind of cooler events. We are prohibiting those under the ordinance changes, and that is in line with what other cities are doing as well. What we've seen over the last few years, other cities have banned these types of events in the public right-of-way, and they've been migrating to the city of West Palm Beach to do them. And, you know, there's plenty of private places where folks can hold these types of events, but we feel like the public venues, it's not appropriate to have these types of events, which tend to get a little bit out of control. So, we're recommending that we don't allow these. Everything else is basically the same. It's what it's been before. Let's talk about private events, because this is really the main generator for these ordinance changes. So, some of the things that constitute a private special event permit, one is the type of event that it's being, and we talked about 50 or more people, but the resources, closure of the city streets if needed. But they have to comply with all the ordinances that are already applicable, whether that be a noise ordinance, the ordinance on parking. All those things are applicable when you're doing a private event. They have to provide indemnification insurance for the city. Any sale of alcohol would require a permit or license from the Division of Alcohol, Beverage, and Tobacco. Tents are also governed by our building department requirements. So, there's a tent that's large at 120 square feet or has electrical cooking facilities. That requires a building permit as well, and the use, as I said, the use of public right-of-way. And the copies of the permits have to be kept on-site. Let me go into some of the specifics of what would be allowed. So, under this revised ordinance, only six special events may be held on private property within a 365-day period within a residential district. Does not apply to commercial district, but within a residential district, this would be the recommendation. Unlike now, there was no, there is no limit right now. Under our ordinance, there is no limit on this. So, this places a limit of six per calendar, or for 365-day period. The first day is the first event. That's when you begin to count it. The exception that we're having here is for a bona fide 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. They can hold up to 18 special events within a 12-month period with the conditions that are listed here. The event has to be directly related to the mission or fundraising of the organization. The space that the event is taking place in has to be the same space that the activities take place for the nonprofit, same physical address. No more than four events for any given month, with again, the maximum of 18 for the 12-month period. And this is the big one, because the biggest complaint we hear is about parking when it comes to these events. The organization has to have an effective off-site parking lease, rental or other contractual agreement that is to be used on a non-residential lot within a half a mile of the special event location, and they must accommodate all the vehicles that are expected for that particular event. So, it means you can't lease a space, you know, your next-door neighbor has a residential house, you can't lease the spaces for the house. It has to be a non-residential parking space. Of course, it'd have to provide us with the existing 501(c)(3) status and a parking agreement that shows the off-site parking. And then we can deny or revoke any such organization's event permit if there's a failure to comply with the permit requirements in two or more events within a 12-month period. I already mentioned about the right-of-way. You cannot valet also within residential neighborhoods, so you can't be parking valet in a residential neighborhood. And they have to provide the off-site parking. As I mentioned, if it's not a nonprofit, let's say, and they're still holding an event, they still have to show that parking requirement, that they can accommodate the spaces either within their location, or again, with an off-site location, and it has to be with the approval, notarized approval of the property owner as shown in the property appraiser's office. Three days is the maximum that you can have for consecutive days for an event. For example, we've had some events where they'll rent out a house, a residential home, usually a large home, to do fundraisers, and sometimes it's over a few days. We're saying it's three days a maximum, excluding the breakup and setup and breakdown. They could be denied an application permit if they owe any money to the city. So, they're indebted anyway for adblocking property taxes, special assessments, utility charges, et cetera. We can deny based on that. Quickly, the other one that we get on occasion is neighborhood block parties, and that's usually neighborhood associations will come to us and apply for a block party. There are some restrictions on that. No alcohol to be served within the right-of-way, and no DJs, tents, or amusement rides and those things when the city's right-of-way as well. And that's mostly to have access for emergency vehicles to get in and out. So, those are the restrictions there. And that is the end of the presentation. I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you for that presentation. Any questions? Okay. Commissioner Warren and Commissioner Lambert?
Often, there are events through City Side Suites at Third and Rosemary, and those events can draw 50 or so people at any time. And sometimes there are outreach events that are done at that location as well to educate people in the community about the things that are going on in and around the city. So, as it relates to the Salvation Army, I guess they would be okay, because they're the 501(c)(3), and then they already have sufficient parking. But would they need to complete special events?
So, an example like City Side Suites, first, it's in a commercial district, I believe. It's still zone commercial where they are. So, it would be, the applicability on the residential parking wouldn't be the same. So, as long as they can accommodate the parking and they are not requesting city services above the normal city services, then even if it's 50 or around there, it should be fine. The issue is when you have a compounding and you have 50 or more, city services are being requested, roads are being closed, parking is an issue. So, when city services become engaged in excess of what they normally are, then that's when it really constitutes a special event.
Commissioner Lambert, will you finish? You had a follow-up?
Thank you. I have two questions. The first is if you could define what qualifies as a special event?
Yes. So, let me go back to that. So, there is your definition of a special event. Shall mean an organized or planned assembly of persons having a common purpose, design, or goal that is to occur either on city-owned or city-controlled property or private property that has an overt impact on the services that are regularly provided by the city. And there's a little bit longer definition. I didn't want to put the whole thing on there. And then these are some of the bullet points of things that would be incorporated into what defines as a special event.
Okay. And the clarification that you made about valet, can you just restate that, that folks cannot have a special event where they're valeting on the public streets?
On the residential street, right. So, if you're holding a large wedding, let's say, and that it's constituting a special event because of some of these reasons, then you cannot valet and park the vehicles within that residential street, on the street. You'd have to have an off-site parking agreement. You could park in other driveways in that case, but it would have to be with an agreement from the property owner.
And I know that oftentimes, these events take place on the weekends. And is there somewhere that, similar to, you know, some of the other notifications that we post on our website, is there somewhere that residents can check to verify, is there a permit for this? Or, you know, when they have complaints over the weekend, a call, are they calling code enforcement? How are we communicating that this might be a permitted event or not?
So, that's a great point, and that we can look at something where we'd be able to notify somehow, either on our website or in some other means, so that folks can look up and see if there's an event that's permitted already. I think that's a suggestion that we can look at. We're also, they would also be required to have the permit on-site, and police would respond to any complaints or any calls. And if they don't have a permit, then that would be a subject to revocation. Well, not revoked, because they didn't have a permit to begin with, but closure of the event.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Commissioner Chauvin?
Thank you, Mayor. And just to clarify on something Commissioner Lambert said, so on the valet question, if you're having a party at your home and it qualifies as a special event, doesn't qualify as a special event, you have a permit, but you won't have a valet. I can have the valet take the cars from my home. I just have to have a contract with a local business to use their parking lot to park the cars. So, valets are permissible as a service to the party, just not to park the cars within the residential streets.
Right. They can't be on the streets. You could have, you can have an agreement for that particular instance, like I said, with a few neighbors, but you'd have to then show that agreement as part of the special event permit application.
Understood. And then the second part of that question is, as we're looking at what defines a special event, it doesn't have to meet every single one of these. It just has to meet a qualification of at least one?
Correct.
Okay. So, something, you know, we talked a little bit about this in Agenda Review. I certainly want this all to be flexible enough that neighbors are still having birthday parties, et cetera, in their own private homes. But we do have those instances where there are parties of 50 or more coming to an Airbnb within our neighborhoods. In that instance, almost guaranteed, they didn't apply for a special event permit. So, at that point, is it an unpermitted special event?
That's correct. It's unpermitted and therefore unlawful.
Okay. So, no matter what's going on there, it should be able to be terminated at that point. It's not about how loud the music is or how rowdy the guests are. It is an unlicensed special event?
If the event, if it meets some of this criteria, so if you have cars parked out in the streets, or city services should have been needed and they... in the streets, or city services should have been needed and they, and they weren't requested because they, they didn't permit, and yet we're getting complaints about cars parked in the streets, excessive noise, those kinds of things, alcohol being sold, whatever it may be, then yes.
Yeah. I guess we can look a little bit further. I know it meets some criteria. I guess my question is, how many of these criteria does it have to meet? Because often there are 50 or more people. It does require excessive city services in that is taking up parking, prohibiting emergency vehicles from getting down narrow streets, that, that kind of thing.
Yeah. Any, any of those you just mentioned could qualify.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Fana? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move approval of ordinance number 4976-21. This motion is based upon the factual testimony presented, the application submitted, the staff report, the recommendation of the planning board, and the findings that the rezoning is consistent with the comprehensive plan and complies with the standards found in sections 94-32 of the city's zoning and land development regulations.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second.
Do you have any comment cards on this?
Oh, you know what? You did it. I'm so sorry. My apologies. We do have a card. We'll, we'll postpone the vote. Let's hear the comment. My apologies. Karen Steele.
My name is Karen Steele, and I'm president of the El Cid Neighborhood, Historic Neighborhood Association. I'm a resident of Barcelona Road. And I bring this up because this is an issue that we have had for years with nonprofit activity on Barcelona Road with the Ann Norton Sculpture Garden. And I would like to also explain that I, I have another association with it. I mean, my husband and I were members of the Ann Norton Garden and active supporters for nearly three decades. And I'm a former executive director. So for nearly three decades, we had a half dozen activities a year at the Ann Norton Sculpture Gardens. And special events were applied for and approved, and everybody worked closely with the neighborhood. The last few years have been, well, not the last two years because of COVID. But this all came about and we approached the city because we had a lot of problems with events going from a half a dozen a year to, to 40 a year. Not all of them were considered special events or did they apply for it, for permits for it because it was less than, they weren't doing parking valet. So thank you for all your work in this direction. However, I'm opposed to the number of events in that section allowing for, for 18 events, special events for the, for a nonprofit organization in a residential, on a residential street. 18 could spell four months, for four and a half months, right? Four, for, every week for four and a half months, which is right during the time when in fact the events are held. Typically, October, sometimes November to March or April. And that's a real safety issue and burden for three of our streets especially. And some of the events are particularly large. We've had thousands of people attending the auto show, in which case they did last year get, get a special transport shuttle bus from a separate parking lot. However, it still feel, fails to solve the problem. Their workers come early before the off-duty policemen and park on the street. The people, I can tell you, I sat in the traffic coming up Barcelona Road when, at the time when they had a special speaker in that afternoon. And, and we had cars parked on both sides of the road. And we have, we had mailmen coming east. We had people going west trying to find parking. I mean, this is, this is an untenable situation that's been going on for years.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anything come over the portal?
Not for this side.
Okay.
Not for this side, Mr. Lambert. Thank you so much, Karen, for coming and speaking up about that. That did bring up a few more questions that I have, Armando. I'm curious, how did the 18 come about? And then also Karen brought up a good point about people parking on the streets. So we will require valet that takes them elsewhere, but then there are many people who might say, oh, I don't want a valet. I'm going to park up and down the streets themselves. Will we, will we be requiring that everyone valet who attends these events? I'm not sure that we, we can require that.
Yes, we can. As part of the, the actual permit, that could be a requirement that they have to valet and have to be, there has to be that off-site agreement. And it has to accommodate the number of, of expected attendees. Otherwise, they're in violation of the permit. And there are, as I said, mentioned before, if you violate the, the terms and conditions of the permit twice or more within a, a year period, then your permit can be revoked.
So if I could just clarify that. So we can require that they offer valet, but can we require that they, their attendees only use valet?
Yeah. I mean, I'll, I'll kind of look towards law, but I, I think we would be able to apply that, yes.
Yes, you can put it as one of the permit conditions for granting the special event.
Yeah. I just, I just wanted to also add that with the 18 days, and that was, that was talking to, one of the, one of the things we did was talk to Ann Norton Sculpture Garden on a number of events. That was actually a compromise because they, they, they wanted to do more or have the ability to do more. So that was one of the, one of the compromises on there. And I just wanted to also add that you can only do four within a month period. So you can't, you can't have one, you know, twice a week for the, for the whole month.
And what will be the fine or the repercussions if they don't adhere to the permit?
So there's a number of, of ways to enforce it, but basically revoking of the permit is, is the main thing. Once the permit, the permit is revoked, then they can't hold any events.
And then final question right now is, what limitations are we putting on setup? And the, the vehicles that might be there the day before or the morning of?
So setup and breakdown is defined within the, the permit itself when it's issued. And it just depends on, depends on the size of the event really, on how much time we're giving them to do setup and take down. So that's in a case-by-case basis.
Okay. It's defined within the permit though?
Yes.
President Pedusi.
Along the same lines, I think it's going to be incredibly difficult to police logistically people arriving at an event and parking down the street from that event. There are going to be people who prefer to park as close as they can to the event without having their vehicle taken to a, a second location. It's going to take time to retrieve it once they're ready to go. So I'm not sure how we handle that. And I could see that begs the question of, you know, the only way to really police the situation is to limit the number of special events because people are going to park on those residential streets regardless. I think unless you, you hire, you know, four police officers to stand all around the area, you're going to have people parking and there's, it's going to potentially be a problem.
Well, and, and in some cases, that's, could be a part of the, the permit requirement is that they have off-duty police officers who are going to enforce. There could be signage, temporary signage that has to be put up, in which case then we can have parking enforcement come in and issue tickets if people are parked illegally. So there's, there's a number of ways to, to get around that. And we will be vigilant with it.
Commissioner Chauvin.
Thank you, Mayor. And I hear some of the concerns of, of my colleagues here on the dais. And, you know, I think to this point, we've, we've got to start somewhere because this ordinance is a citywide ordinance. So this isn't just something that affects Ann Norton Sculpture Gardens, or Airbnbs, or anything like that. So if I'm a year-round, you know, not-for-profit, if I'm a year-round business that's within a residential neighborhood and I want to have special events, you know, 18 might not be too many when it's spaced out. And, you know, I guess from my point of view, I certainly want to be sensitive. And I think we should really look at the, the parking aspect of this and see if there are ways we can mitigate that. But I want to be mindful that we're not talking about just one section. We're talking about an entire city. And so, you know, that, that regulation may vary. I think there's always the opportunity to come back and revisit if we find out that, that it's still not working, you know. It's not going to be an exact science. But I think, you know, going from infinite amount allowable to 18 is a pretty good stretch. So it sounds like a good place to start. And I think it's something that we should look at and monitor.
Correct. And I want to just remind folks that the 18 is only for nonprofit organizations with all those stipulations in there. Otherwise, it's six.
Any other questions or comments?
Just a comment, Mayor.
Yes, Commissioner Lambert.
I just wanted to thank Commissioner Chauvin for that point. That's a, that's a good point. And I am appreciative that we went from infinity to 18 now and to six if you're not a nonprofit. And I will continue to work with the residents and with city staff and administration just to make sure that we are monitoring this. And we'll look forward to hopefully that everything runs smoothly. But if, in the case that it doesn't, that we are able to come back to the table and, and re-discuss this.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's go through the motion again so we have a clean record. I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move approval of ordinance number 4976-21. This motion is based upon the factual testimony presented, the application submitted, the staff report, the recommendation of the planning board, and the findings that the rezoning is consistent with the comprehensive plan and complies with the standards found in sections, section 94-32 of the city's zoning and land development regulations.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Discussion, hearing none. Madam Clerk can read the ordinance, please.
Ordinance number 4976-21. And also the City Commission of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida amend the Code of Audits of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida at Chapter 78, Streets, Sidewalks and Public Places to amend and replace Article 6 Special Events, revising the regulation regarding special events and special events permits, amending Chapter 94, Zoning and Land Development Regulations, Section 94-407, Signs permitted in all districts to amend the regulations addressing temporary signs for non-commercial events of public interest, providing a compliance clause, a codification clause, and a availability clause providing an effective date and for other purposes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries. Yeah, I'll say thank you, Mr. Fana. We're now entering to court judicial. Commissioners, I need you to make your statements, disclosures. We'll start with you, President Pedusi.
Thank you, Mayor. As to items 10.2 and 10.3, I have not had experte communications. I have not received written communications. I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visit, nor have I received any expert opinions. As to items 10.1 and 10.4, I have had experte communications with representatives of the developers. I have not received written communications. I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visit, nor have I received any expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made a part of the record.
Commissioner Lambert.
Thank you. As to item 10.1, I have had experte communications with the representatives and development team. I have received written communications from residents. I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visit. I have not received expert opinions. Items 10.2 and 10.3, I have not had experte communications. I have not received written communications. I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visit. And I have not received expert opinions. As to item 10.4, I have had experte communications with the developer and representatives. I have not received written communications. I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visit, nor have I received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Commissioner Fox.
As to items 10.1 and 10.4, I have had experte communications with representatives of the developers. I have received written communications. I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visit. I have not received expert opinions. As to items 10.2 and 10.3, I have not had experte communications. I have not received written communications. I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visit. I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Commissioner Warren.
Good evening. In reference to items 10.1 and 10.4, I have had experte communications with the developers representative. I have not received written communications. I have not conducted an investigation, not made a site visit, not received expert opinions. In reference to items 10.2 and 10.3, I have not had experte communications, not received written communications, not conducted an investigation, not made a site visit, not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made a part of the record.
Commissioner Chauvin.
As to item 10.1, I have had experte communications with the development team as well as surrounding neighbors. I have received written communications. I have not conducted an investigation. I have made a site visit. I have not received expert opinions. As to items 10.2 and 10.3, I have not had experte communications, not received written communications, not conducted an investigation, not made a site visit, nor made, nor received expert opinions. As to item 10.4, I have had experte communications with the applicants and development team. I have not received written communications, not conducted an investigation, not made a site visit, nor received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you, Commissioners. Madam Clerk, can you swear in the witnesses?
Everyone wishing to speak on items 10.1 through 10.4, please stand and raise your right hand. Swear the testimony about to give to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. May be seated.
All right. Very good. Item 10.1, public hearing and second reading of ordinance number 4927-22 regarding a rezoning of plus or minus 1.73 acres located at 4708-4714 North Flagler Drive from multifamily high-density residential to residential plan development. And public hearing of resolution number 2-22 regarding the development regulations and conditions for the Alba Residence's residential plan development and the granting of waivers of the zoning and land development regulations. Mr. Roach?
Good evening, Mayor. Commission, for the record, John Roach, principal planner for the city. So this is a second reading. There have been no modifications since first reading two weeks ago when it came before you. The applicant, as well as myself, though, are available to answer any questions. Or if there is additional presentation or information that you're looking for, we can certainly provide that. But again, there have been no changes since first reading.
All right. Very good. Any comments, questions from commission? All right. We do have a couple of cards. More than a couple. I'm going to read off the first three names. And if you could start making your way toward the podium. Kim Barbary, Louise Stoney, and Omar Randolph. Does Omar want to speak? He will speak. Okay. Ms. Barbary?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Thank you. My name is Kim Barbary, and I'm a resident of the Old Northwood neighborhood, and also own a condo at the Eaton House right next door to the proposed Alba project. Repeating my stance from the lap first reading, I believe that the commission should reject this request for a zoning waiver and quickly put in place a process for plan development that respects this historic community and enables growth without disrupting the already fragile infrastructure. We need a master plan for the Flagler Drive area, North Flagler Drive, excuse me, one that looks carefully at current infrastructure challenges and community needs, and involves residents, city leaders, developers, and planning experts. Without a plan, we will find ourselves in several years, if not sooner, standing on North Flagler Drive staring at a wall of concrete with zero lot lines, wondering, how did we get here? How was this allowed to happen? It is essential that the city commission step up and exert the leadership we need for responsible growth. Planning cannot occur by way of waiver. The city as a whole and the residents of this waterfront neighborhood deserve a master plan for North Flagler. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Louise Stoney?
Mayor James, Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to speak again. As you know, I own a condo at Eaton House, and I've been a vocal opponent of this waiver request. I'm still opposed, but out of respect for your time, I'm not going to repeat what I said last time. What I want to talk about is the future of, of West Palm Beach and of the North End. Let's be honest, our zoning codes don't work. They don't work for developers. They don't work for residents. They need to be changed. Unfortunately, when we make change by zoning waivers, we resort to battles. Those of us who are opposed don't have a voice unless we rally the troops, get letters of opposition, come here, holler and scream, oppose. That's a zero-sum game, and it doesn't benefit anyone. I don't oppose development. I want development of the North End. I'm deeply concerned about climate change. We saw the demonstration. We saw the demonstration earlier. That needs to be taken into consideration as we're develop, as we're considering approving development. I'm deeply concerned about our historic neighborhoods and about nonprofit organizations like the Palm Beach Sailing Club and the Flotilla Club that are a really important part of our infrastructure. I'm deeply concerned about the impact of rising housing prices. And North Borough Park is one of the few places where people can actually find housing that they can afford, and they feel fortunate. They love their neighborhood. They don't want to leave. Many of the residents feel the same way I do. They're not here tonight because they feel powerless. When I speak to them, they say to me, it doesn't matter. The commission doesn't want to hear me. The commission listens to developers. That makes me sad. No one should feel powerless to stand up for their neighborhood. We need a process where residents can be involved in planning the North End. We, we can do this better. I request that you step up. We need a master plan for the North End. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Omar Randolph?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. As a supporter of this project, I, I can appreciate what the women just said. But on the other hand, I also see the, you know, the work, the architect and developer, you know, spent working alongside with the city and pushing, you know, their setbacks back and making sure there would be as little intrusion as possible with the parking structure. And I think they came up with a really nice building, and I hope to see it get built. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I have two more cards, George Shields and Erica Moyer.
Jerry. Jerry Shields.
I'm sorry, Jerry Shields, my apologies.
George couldn't make it.
Okay, my apologies.
I am opposed to the building of Alba, and I think the commission has got to investigate. All of you said, I did not investigate, which I stand corrected if you say we don't have to, but I think you should. When somebody's going to build a big building like this, we should investigate. And I think we have a lot of building going on right now. I support the majority of them. This building, it's a little lot, right on the water, not like these other buildings that have a lot of land and the, we, the people are going to benefit, such as Curry Park and the other Rybivich. I don't see me getting anything out of this or my neighbors except for fifty-five filthy rich people, you know? That's good for them, but it's not good for the neighborhood. Look at these things. I think you should step back and hold it up and say, hello, let's see what goes on in this neighborhood. I really think people, what will happen is people start selling their houses, and you're going to have Fort Lauderdale. And the last time I was in Fort Lauderdale, I hated it because it took me an hour to move three blocks. If you want that, bring George back up here, and he'll support it, but not Jerry Shields. Have a good night.
Thank you very much. Erica Moyer? Is she here? All right, she supports it. Worked in the neighborhood, and I'm looking forward to the growth this project will bring to the community. Serena Spence?
Good evening, Mayor James and Commission. I'm Serena Spence. It's great to see you again. I am a Realtor that lives on Flagler, about two blocks from the proposed project. I also am a Realtor that specializes in waterfront property. I support this project because as a resident of Northwood, I see where the community has to inevitably evolve. I see a lot of buildings that are not well-kept. I see a lot of even fear in our community due to a lack of lighting, a lack of art, a lack of safe walkability and seating. And so I like that this project starts to add value to the community, thinks about the optics of the community. We already have related, building a wonderful project that is already approved and already moving forward. And due to all the acquisitions that are happening on Flagler, especially on waterfront, there are other projects that I'm sure will be in front of you very soon asking for the exact same proposals. So I, I do believe that we need a plan, but I also believe that, I lived in Palm Beach County for eight years, and I've just been waiting for Northwood to catch up with the vision. And so to oppose progress, I don't think would be beneficial at this time. As well as reminding us from last time, this project will increase the tax base by over one point five million dollars. It will also employ over four hundred new job opportunities and, as well as sales for people, once again, that want to be in waterfront, that's a new opportunity that doesn't quite exist in sales for Northwood new construction. We're doing a ton of resales on waterfront in Northwood, but we need an opportunity for new faces to be able to sell waterfront. So I support this project, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. No other cards, is there anything in the portal?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Dana Cohen, nine eight five one Pioneer Road, West Palm Beach. I would like to express my support for this project. I think this would be an incredible addition to the area and look forward to its hopeful completion. Ryan Poole, three thirteen Detroit Street, number two hundred, West Palm Beach. I am the founder of a real estate tech platform called Real Trade. We operate out of downtown West Palm Beach, and I fully support the Alba project, and it will positively impact my business. Philip Kraft, four two eight Twenty-Ninth Street, West Palm Beach. We must stop pop-up development and move to create an overall plan to govern the development of the North End of Palm Beach. A development plan is essential to both govern and control the future. Yang Chen Cutzol, sorry for mispronouncing it, two four zero nine North Dixie Highway, West Palm Beach. I am the merchant in the Northwood Village. I am the supporter of Seamud and Aquasite. At this time, I'm happy we have another project come to our North End. We needed to let pass and break in ground as soon as possible. We not only need to have the plan, but also the action. I think Alba project will move faster than all others. I know the construction will have the impact of the quiet village, but this is the temporary growing pain. In the end, it will be able to bring more residents to our beautiful neighborhood. Tabor Trey, three oh five Dyer Road, West Palm Beach. I am in full support of the Alba project and design as proposed by developer and the redevelopment of the Northwood neighborhood. Janet Plitt, forty-seven hundred North Flagler Drive, apartment two oh four, West Palm Beach. The Alba project is too large a building to be on this small location. It is going to be an absolute nightmare for the residents of Eaton House condominium and all the close neighbors and neighborhoods.
Thank you very much. Any further questions, comments, Commissioners? Commissioner Shov?
Thank you, Mayor, and, and I want to say thank you to the residents who continue to go out and come out and, and support, both support things that they believe in and come out to speak out against things that they don't. You know, I, I'm especially sensitive to conversations about Commissioners listening to residents because I really do try to go the extra mile. I show up at your homes. I'll go to job sites. I'll go to potential, anything to see how things look from, from your points of view with, with your shoes on the sidewalk, and I will continue to do that. The difficult part comes, become, becomes when the point of view from one person's window looks different from the point of view of another person's window, both equally grounded in the same neighborhood. And it's a very difficult position to be in when you're not going to please everybody. And so I think the best things that we can do as Commissioners is to look to what is the best for the entire future. And I think one of the things that a lot of us agree on are more people, more residents, and in general, development for the North End is a good thing. I understand that we don't always agree on each and every individual development. But again, you know, I, I said it last time, and I'll say it again this time. I think this is a step towards the future, and the future is where we need to go. And so I'll continue to be there, whether we agree or whether we don't agree, to look at the issues and, and take them on as we go. I look forward to getting together to get a plan for the North End. I am fully supportive of, of a plan of where we need to have great developments, about where we need to preserve green space, and about how we need to move into the future. And tonight I'll be supporting this to move through and looking forward to the next steps working together. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, approve, I move to approve ordinance number forty-nine twenty-seven dash twenty-two, changing the zoning designation of plus or minus one point seven-three acres located at forty-seven oh eight to forty-seven fourteen North Flagler Drive from multifamily high-density residential to residential plan development and granting a waiver of the minimum area required. This motion is based upon the application submitted, the staff report, factual testimony, the recommendation of the planning board, and the findings that the request complies with a comprehensive plan and the standards in section ninety-four dash thirty-two and ninety-four dash two oh seven of the City's zoning and land development regulations. The City Commission finds that a particular circumstance justifies the reduction of plan development acreage to less than ten acres, and that the requirement for planned development, district zoning, and benefits to be derived from the planned development district zoning can be derived in such lesser area.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, discussion. Madam Clerk, can you read the ordinance, please?
Ordinance number forty-nine twenty-seven dash twenty-two. In order to the City Commission of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, amend the zoning map of the City of West Palm Beach by rezoning plus or minus one point seven-three acres located at forty-seven oh eight through forty-seven fourteen North Flagler Drive for multifamily high-density residential to residential plan development to create the Alba residential plan development, providing for the establishment of development regulations by separate resolution, declaring the zoning map amendment to be consistent with the comprehensive plan of the city, revising the zoning map of the city accordingly, providing an effective date and further purposes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Commissioner Shov?
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number two dash twenty-two, approving the development regulations and conditions for the Alba Residence's RPD and granting waivers of the zoning and land development regulations. This motion is based upon the application submitted, the staff report, the factual testimony, the recommendation of the planning board, and the findings that the request complies with the comprehensive plan and the standards in section ninety-four dash thirty-two, ninety-four dash thirty-five, and ninety-four dash two oh seven, the City's zoning and land development regulations.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, discussion?
I have a question, Mayor.
Yes.
While I'm in favor of, of moving this forward, I am also in favor of putting together some sort of plan for the North End and for this area. Is that in this administration's plans moving forward?
Does that affect the motion? You have a question on this motion? I mean, we can ask that later. Let's, let's do the business of, of this first, and then, or does that affect your decision on this?
Yeah, I guess I, I would like to know if that is...
I don't know. I don't, I don't think it's been part of our discussions here before. So, I mean, we'll take a look at it and, and see.
So it, it, are you, you're saying it's a possibility that we can look at a, a plan for this area?
Yes, it is a possibility as a timing of it. I don't know when, but it is a possibility, absolutely.
Thank you. I'd support that, but, and appreciate it.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item ten point two, public hearing and first reading of ordinance number forty-nine eighty-eight dash twenty-one to designate the former Hatches Department Store and related sites at three oh one Clamata Street, three hundred Banyon Boulevard, and one sixty-one North Olive Avenue on the West Palm Beach Register of Historic Places.
Mayor Kimberly Ronthenberg, on behalf of the City Attorney's Office, we received a request by the applicant, once again, to please move this item to the February seventh agenda for consideration at that time.
Okay, so we need a motion.
So moved.
All right, it's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously to February seventh, okay? Item ten point three, public hearing of resolution number seventeen dash twenty-two regarding a major amendment to the Palm Beach Atlantic University, PBAU Community Service Plan Development, CSPD, to adopt a signage master plan.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. For the record, Joanie Brinkman with Urban Design Studio. On behalf of the applicant, Palm Beach Atlantic University. I know you still have another item after this, so I'll try to get through this fairly quickly. Just real briefly, the item before you deny is a master sign program for the university to effect a branding program. The university was founded in nineteen sixty-eight, has nearly four thousand students, including their online. The downtown campus is about nineteen acres. I started working on this project back in nineteen eighty-six, when it was only around five acres. So been with the university as an agent for a long time, and they're excited about creating this branding program that'll elevate their university to this status and wa, provide wayfinding that is comparable with the, the status of the university. Again, the reason for this request is to increase public awareness of this asset to the city, define clear wayfinding for the campus, establish a sense of place and campus boundaries within this downtown area, and offer hospitality to visitors and emphasize school spirit, and match the high quality of the academic programs with this excellent visuals that are being proposed. Again, we're looking forward to your support as a longtime community partner in the city. Very quickly, we are asking for, the city has requested, and it is included in our report, just compliance with permitting that we'll have to do for the signage, that the signs will have to comply with the maximum sign face area based on your wall frontage facade requirements in your code, and that the murals, as proposed, in the future, will have to go through your mural approval process as defined in your code. What we're asking for are three different types of signs, the first one being the banners that are not inconsistent with the city banners you see in, in the downtown area. We, based on some discussion at the planning board, at which we did receive unanimous approval, we have created minimum separation distance from the ground of eight feet. We have different sized poles throughout the campus, so the fifteen-foot poles would have an eight-foot clearance. The twenty-two and thirty-foot poles would have a minimum eight-foot clearance, up to fifteen feet, based on allowance to place the banner to accommodate landscape and trees and different things like that. In your package, there is the colored map of where the locations will go. You'll notice a majority of them are internal to the campus. There are some along the major roadways, and in your staff report and the resolution, based on direction from the planning board to allow the university some flexibility in the future to potentially change the locations or maybe even add sign, the banners, internal to the campus. There was a, that is going to be allowed administratively, but should we propose any additional ones on the main thoroughfares in, in the city, such as Okeechobee, Dixie, Flagler, Olive, that would require us to come back before the commission to, to request your approval for that. This just shows you examples of where some of the banners would go, internal to the campus, and a representation of potential design themes for the branding. Additionally, we'll have some large branded sign types that are stretch frames. One type will be the internal wayfinding to the campus. And again, these locations are in the maps as included in your staff report. They'll also have hanging vinyl banners. This one is internal to the campus. And again, the sign locations for the banners and the stretch signs are memorialized in your staff report. Here's some samples of locations on the building, again, that will have to comply with your requirements in the zoning code as far as maximum sign face area. Some samples of the internal panel signs for wayfinding, another banner location. And finally, the university is in the process of contracting with an artist to potentially show a, to create a statue there at that fountain that hasn't been operating in a while, right there at Okeechobee. And murals, as mentioned, are also included in the sign program. However, they will have to go through your process through CIBILAY to get those approvals. That concludes my presentation. Available for any questions, Taylor Smythe is here also from the university who helped create the branding program.
Okay, any questions for the applicant? All right, thank you, Ms. Brinkman. Staff? Mr. Roach?
Good evening. For the record, John Roach, Principal Planner for the city. So, the applicant went through all the details, so I won't go into that. Just want to put on the record that staff is recommending approval based upon compliance of the amendment standards in ninety-four dash thirty-two of the zoning code. The planning board also recommended approval unanimously at their November meeting. In summary, it's just allowing some exceptions to our current sign regulations for the purposes of the university, as stated in their presentation. Nearly all of those signage elements that they presented to you are internal to the campus and therefore don't necessarily impact, you know, those outside the campus itself. We did limit the amount of banners and so forth that are along the perimeter to be more in compliance with what our current regulations are there, but allowed that flexibility internal, so they can do the walkways and things like that. So, pretty straightforward. Haven't received any objection with regards to the proposal, and again, staff's recommending approval.
Good, very good. Questions for staff? All right, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution number seventeen dash twenty-two, approving a major amendment to the Palm Beach Atlantic University Community Service Plan Development to adopt a signage master plan. This motion is based upon the application submitted, the staff report, factual testimony, the recommendation of the planning board, the findings that the request complies with the comprehensive plan and the standards in section ninety-four dash thirty-two of the city's zoning and land development regulations.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded at discussion. All right, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item ten point four, public hearing of Resolution number nine dash twenty-two regarding a request by Harvey E. Sawyer III of Shuts &amp; Law &amp; LLP on behalf of City Place Retail LLC for the approval of a major amendment to the City Place Commercial Plan Development to amend the Rosemary Square Core Development Regulations to expand the boundary of the Rosemary Square Core to include the C Block Garage, to create the Rosemary Square East and South subareas, and to make text changes to other sections of the regulations. The new Rosemary Square East subarea includes increasing the permitted height from five to twenty-five stories, and the new Rosemary Square South subarea includes increasing the permitted height from five to eight stories. Mr. Sawyer.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioner. I stepped out of the room during the swearing in, so I need to be sworn in.
Okay. Madam Clerk.
You swear a testimony, but do you have to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. So, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. I'm Harvey Sawyer of Shuts &amp; Bone. I'm here on behalf of the related companies with a request to make several amendments to the Rosemary Square Development Regulations, formerly known as the City Place Development Regulations. To remind everyone, this is a development of regional impact. It is not part of the DMP, so it has its own set of design and development regulations, and we were proposing amendments to several portions. To make it easy, I've broken it into two parts. The first is to create two new subareas, Rosemary Square East and Rosemary Square South, and secondly, a miscellaneous text change to make the plaza area where the fountain and tree are located consistent with the terminology in the city code. So, the first of these requests is to create the Rosemary Square East subarea. To jog your memory, we were in front of you several years ago to create the green area on the map before you, formerly known as the Macy's site. That became its own subarea as that redeveloped. We were before you, I believe, last year to seek a designation of a new subarea where the purple rectangle is at the top of your screen. That's known as the Publix Block, so that that can redevelop. So, the reason you're seeing this, folks, is this is a twenty-five-year-old set of regulations, and as City Place has evolved into Rosemary Square and now the Square, as it changes, we want the development regulations and terminology to keep pace with that. So, the first request tonight is the red rectangular box that is everything east of Rosemary, north of Hibiscus, to Gardenia, and west of the FEC railroad tracks, and to change this to allow a maximum of twenty-five stories in height and a floor area ratio of six point five. This would be subject to the same requirements that Related voluntarily accepted on both the Macy's site and the Publix site when those were rezoned. I won't read these to you, but it includes a number of requirements that, to my best knowledge, are not required anywhere else in the city or the downtown, and this is in consideration of the additional height. The second request is at the southwest corner of the intersection of Hibiscus and Rosemary. It is the property that presently the Cheesecake Factory occupies. That is an original tenant of development, one of the most successful tenants and one that we would all like to keep there. They would like to move across the street to the green area, the former Macy's site, when that redevelops with newer, more modern space designed in a way that works better for them, and we would, when, and if that occurs, we would like to redevelop their current site at a floor area ratio not to exceed five point oh and a height not to exceed eight stories. So, that would then become the Rosemary Square South subarea. To put this in context with the surrounding building heights, and I know you're familiar with this, but there are tall buildings either already existing under construction or proposed in this area, and this is to demonstrate that these building envelopes, as part of this rezoning, are in context with their surrounding uses. And of course, with respect to both of these proposed subareas, the surrounding property owner on all sides is the applicant, with the exception of Rosemary Square East, where the eastern boundary is the Florida East Coast Railroad right-of-way. And the final request, which is sort of ministerial, is to get the nomenclature for the public plaza to reference open, or urban open space to ensure consistency with the remainder of the city code, so that one is a bit of a non-event. The rezonings meet the standards for major amendments found in section ninety-four dash thirty-two A of your code. Of course, I'm happy to go through these individually if you'd like, but I don't think there's any question. We enjoy staff support. We received unanimous planning board support, and as you will see, we have letters of support from virtually, I think, all of our surrounding neighbors. I'll give you a moment to review these. But it's the Dreyfus School, the CDD, Bright Line. I think we have a speaker here from the townhouse POA to speak in favor of it. I'm not aware of any opposition to any of these requests. Again, our request is for the creation of those two new subareas of Rosemary Square Development Regulations and to get that conflicting nomenclature in compliance with the remainder of the city code. So, before I conclude, every time that we have come before your staff to create a new subarea, for example, at the Macy's site and the Publix site, and tonight is no different, your staff has wanted to understand what type of building are you proposing? And in each instance, we have provided that, and I would like to provide that to you this evening, so that you can see what type of building scale we're talking about. This would be looking north on Rosemary with the Harriet Himmel Theater on the right, and where you see that building would be about where Brio is located today. And this would be about a three hundred and fifty thousand square foot Class A office building, and of course, what is motivating this is the corporate relocations that we are working on and have in the pipeline. Those relocations, if we're lucky enough to land all of them, demand new, modern Class A office space, and they would like to be in places like Rosemary Square, where they have movie theaters, restaurants, housing, Bright Line, everything within a block or two of their office building. And I would also like to share with you the proposed design. All of this would have to come back to you, of course. It'd be a Level Three site plan approval. It would go to planning board and back to you, but I want you to at least have an understanding of the target that we're aiming at. This would be the second office building that would basically sit where the AMC Movie Theater site and the Hibiscus parking garage are located today. The Hibiscus garage would remain in place. This building would can a lever over the top of it and better utilize that space. Again, the only neighbor to the east is the Railroad Right-of-Way and Quadrell, and Quadrell is, I think, the widest road right-of-way in the downtown, and the other three sides are owned by the applicant that is making the request. The AMC Movie Theater would not be lost either, just like Cheesecake Factory. They would receive a new, more modern, smaller, fewer theaters, but more modern theaters in the podium of this building. And to me, one of the great features here, and I give staff all of the credit for this, very large setbacks. The setback off of Hibiscus is eighty feet for the building at the corner, which is similar to the setback of the Macy's building, and a similar setback would be required of the Cheesecake Factory, greatly opening that intersection to light, air, pedestrian uses. And then, the feature that I'm about to point out, which is breaking up what is today a very large block and putting a pedestrian plaza diagonal through the middle of it. So, we're taking the space and putting it in taller buildings, but then creating much larger pedestrian areas, including this diagonal pedestrian plaza that would take one from the Harriet Himmel Theater, for example, directly to the Bright Line Station. So, instead of walking around the blocks, you walk through the middle of the block, a great enhancement. And again, thank staff for working with us. A lot of this was their suggestion. In fact, I think we've worked on this with them for the last seven to nine months, so that we could come to you with full staff and neighborhood support. So, with that, we stand ready for any questions. I thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you for that presentation. Any questions for the applicant before we go to staff? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Sawyer. Staff? Eric Schneider.
Good evening. For the record, Eric Schneider, Principal Planner. I have a presentation, but Mr. Sawyer covered pretty much everything there. Really, these graphics show what can be built, and as Mr. Sawyer said, we worked with the applicant for a considerable time, making sure that what is on the paper can come forward, and then, when they'll come forward with the Level Three, for you to see the final buildings. So, just want to point out, these might not be the final buildings, but you will see a building that looks similar, at least in how it sits on the site, to what you see in these last two drawings that Mr. Sawyer showed. I have, I have, can I answer any questions if you have them, but I don't really have any presentation. As Mr. Sawyer said, planning board recommended approval, staff recommended approval, and so it's a...
Very good. Thank you. Any questions for staff? Commissioner Lambert, then Commissioner Fox.
Thank you. Just a quick question on how have, can you talk a little bit about how the impacts of these changes will have on the traffic in the area or considerations for increased traffic due to these changes?
As Mr. Sawyer mentioned, this is part of what's known as the City Place Development of Regional Impact. The City Place Development of Regional Impact has a set cap of development in it. So, off the top of my head, I want to say one point two-five million square feet of office, you know, a hundred, or eight hundred and fifty thousand square feet of retail, hotel rooms, so forth. If they cannot fit these buildings within that development capacity, they can't build them. You saw that a little bit with the tent site when they came forward. They had to do a conversion from another use because the tent site had too much office. Related does have some office that they have tied up in the, on the site where Restoration Hardware is now. If they take that office space and convert it over to here, that Restoration Hardware stays the size it is. It doesn't get any bigger. So, I'm trying to answer your question, and there's a cap. It was based on the development ability to handle this area, the co-mingling of residential and retail and office all in one spot. So, while the traffic engineer will look at their traffic studies, when the individual projects come in to make sure that, you know, the driveways, any driveways or any circulation issues work, still work with any parking that's needed, this has been built in as part of the Development of Regional Impact when it was established in the eighties, so... Did I answer your question?
Thank you.
Commissioner Fox.
Thank you. I think this project is really beautiful. I know it might not look like this, but I live in this neighborhood in a townhouse, you know, a block away, and I think this is what I was expecting to happen to West Palm maybe in ten years from now, and so much has, you know, been escalated because of the past few years of COVID, and so I think that we are, this is such an exciting time for our city, but I think we're still very behind in some aspects, such as finding alternative transportation, as, you know, as to what Commissioner Lambert says. That's my one, you know, hesitation about some of these things before we have other transportation methods in place. And so, one of my questions was going to be that I noticed on the applicant's slide, it said if required, they would have a contribution to the trolley operations. I guess my question for you is, is that something we can require? I think, you know, obviously, looking at the county, we have people coming to West Palm Beach to work from Jupiter, and so we might not be able to help with every, you know, alternative transportation, but I think the city can do a lot of things internally on our own. So, I think, you know, when there's an opportunity to find contributions for our trolley, for example, I would say, let's always take those opportunities, but I would just ask you, you know, is this something we will require, or is it up to us?
Okay. Well, that's a good question, and one of the things, and that's been built into both the Macy's redevelopment and the Publix redevelopment, where right now, or well, Macy's isn't there anymore, but there was a building there at one point of, and it had an impact, based on established how you can determine vehicle trips for that size of a building. What we've built into all those, all these projects, this one included, is that if, even though they're asking for more size, if the trips, when they come in with the building, show us their trip generation is more for the new building than it was for the old building, that's when they need to contribute. So, in the instance of the Macy's building, when they, because they have very little retail now compared to what was there before, and then the residential, the actual trips that that building generate are going to be less than what the Macy's site did. So, there's no additional contribution above what Related and City Place Retail contribute now to the city's trolley funds. We're going to do that same analysis when Publix comes in. If that new Publix building, when they come in, shows more trips than what the existing Publix site has, and since they're making a bigger Publix, or a bigger grocery store, excuse me, it might have more trips. They will then have to contribute additional funds for the trolley operations. The same thing here. If these buildings that you see generate more traffic trips than the Movie Co. or the Brio or the Improv as a whole, they would need to contribute additional funds to the trolley operation. So that even though they're allowed to do it by square footages from the DRI, we have that built in so that the additional impact can then be fed back into mitigating that additional impact, and that impact would be vehicle trips. You'll also see some things in there about that, the, you know, discounts for off-peak hours for people to come in. We've used some of these other features that we did for different buildings, such as the One Flagler and the tent site properties, where we've looked at some of these, how to mitigate transportation demand management strategies, and we've incorporated them as part of the, and the applicants agreed, as part of the trade-off for going higher and higher FAR on these particular sites. So, hopefully, what we've put into place will lessen the impact of the building... So hopefully, what we've put into place will lessen the impacts of the buildings that are coming in. They are in close proximity to the Bright Line. We've got the Tri-Rail not too far away. As you point out, we've got the shuttles that go to those. So the proximity of why they want the bigger buildings is also a reason why the bigger buildings fit there because there's transportation options that are, have been built recently that now make this feasible. So it's not just piling more stuff into a location where it can't handle it. Did that answer your question?
Commissioner Shoff.
Thank you. And I actually had another question, but Commissioner Fox actually made me, made me think a little bit too. So I just wanted to clarify on something. It sounds as though the trolley contribution was there to look at some sort of multimodal transportation. And I mean, in this particular applicant, we have a partner that's already voluntarily contributed to things like bike share, et cetera. So when we're looking at that parameter, is that left open-ended so it can be multimodal transportation? So that way, I don't know if the circuit car makes the most sense, if the trolley makes the most sense, or if whatever new multimodal transportation that comes up. I mean, we do have a unique location here where we have actual public and private brick and mortar transportation in Bright Line and the Tri-Rail that are not going anywhere. So I think it's a matter of kind of getting in between those too. So is that parameter flexible in here?
Well, right now, if there's a trolley system maintained, that's where the money's going to go first. If the trolley system goes away, then that would transition into something else that they're, you know, that they would have to do. But we don't anticipate, hopefully, the trolley system, it's been so successful since we implemented it years ago, that I don't see that, you know, it's going to go away unless, you know, we have instant transportation where you walk in, you know, the Star Trek thing where you zip around.
We start to get beamed up.
Yeah, before beamed around, maybe not up. But, but in all seriousness, they want to make their project successful. It's not going to be any use for Related to have a project that nobody wants to go to because it's too hard to get to and no businesses are going to, or no office tenants are going to want to lease there because you can't get to your office or when, when people need to come there. So they understand it. They've been willing to work with the city and the DDA on the original trolley contributions and a lot of the other features that they put in. I mean, we've got the, they did a lot of the multimodal when they did Rosemary and the, you know, the difference between the, you know, the drop-offs, the timeshare, where they loading does it in the morning and you've got trolleys then can, and drop off. And then in the evening, you've got rideshare can, can use those flex spaces as well. So they understand it. They've put money in. There's a lot of stuff that we saw originally with studies that they had. The GEL folks that came in and studied this, that we've used for some of our projects as well. So there's been a lot of thought gone into this even before they came in to submit to the city for this, for planning staff to start reviewing it and go through. And, and I'm sure that they weren't happy with some of the, some of the changes based on the comments we made, but I think it worked out for everybody.
Short answer on the trolley, it goes towards the trolley, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then to the, the second part of what my original question was, the essence of this is that we're taking the development capacity and simply shifting it around the regional impact area, right? So what in essence that's doing is creating more open pedestrian space and allowing more height. Is that the essence of what we're doing here?
That's a good summation of what's going on here.
Okay. And I mean, I understand these aren't going to be the buildings necessarily to the T that are coming in, but I think what's really to be commended by the developer here is that City Place has morphed into Rosemary Square, has morphed into the Square. And, you know, I think the, the amount of attention that's being paid to making this look like one cohesive development, regardless of what age the building is, is really incredible. And it's starting to shape up to be something quite modern with trolley services as well. So all good to see. Thanks so much.
All right. Any other questions, comments on this? All right, hearing none. Do we have any cards? Anything, you know, we do have one card. Is there anything in the portal? Okay, we have a card from Faustina Guerrero.
Hi, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Faustina Guerrero. I'm a West Palm Beach resident. I live on Fern Street, just a block from all of this development. And I'm the Treasurer of the City Place Townhomes. I'm here to represent our POA Board. And we appreciate the millions of dollars that Related and City Retail has reinvested into Rosemary Square. We fully support their vision and their goals to improve our neighborhood. And we believe that they're creating both a functional and beautiful downtown area where we can live and work and play. Related has really listened to our concerns. And our neighborhood has had many concerns on this, from traffic to building setbacks, height. And they've really worked with us in resolving a lot of those issues. We appreciate their partnership. We support Related in expanding the Rosemary Square Core. We're just happy to see our neighborhood thriving. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, no more public comments. So any questions, comments, or not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 9-22 regarding a major amendment to the City Place Commercial Plan Development to amend the Rosemary Square Core Development Regulations to expand the boundary of the Rosemary Square Core to include the C Block Garage to create the Rosemary Square East and South subareas and to make text changes to other sections of the regulations. This motion is based upon the factual testimony presented, the application submitted, the staff report, the recommendation of the Planning Board, and the findings that the amendment is consistent with the comprehensive plan and complies with the standards found in Section 94-32 of the city's zoning and land development regulations.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like, sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Now it is time for comments from the public. We have a few cards. Christine Blakesley. And I'll read another name, Alseer King. And Ludwig Luck. Okay. Ms. Blakesley? Christine Blakesley, is she here? Okay, she's not here. Mr. King. Alseer King. Okay, she did have a comment. Rent stabilization law needs to be in place for Florida. Okay, thank you. Mr. Luck.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Ludwig Luck. I'm a resident of Barra County. The reason why I'm here is I didn't get the opportunity to actually introduce myself prior to the meeting, but I'm the new Regional Manager for the Florida Department of Financial Services. And my role is to essentially, you know, inform the community, be the liaison between the government and local communities and, you know, to see where we can support the community regarding our services and resources. And so that's the reason why I'm here. Hopefully, I'll get the opportunity to meet with you. If for any reason, I'll be here. But I just want to say thank you, and that was it.
Well, thank you. Make sure you give, Armando, can you get his contact information and make sure that we, Mr. Fana, one of my assistant city administrators, will get your contact information and make sure that we are in touch. Thank you. Michael Cleveland.
Good evening again. First of all, I want to touch on two items that were recently brought. Funeral services, weddings, and are they considered special events? There was a note that I had in mind, but I can't think right now. And also, Mayor, no disrespect to you and the staff and the Commission. I agree with the funding for the school system, but I just think the, not school system, elementary schools, I just think that the, the format should be tailored down more so, because it is a needed concern. Last time I was here before you, and I spoke about weight on the earth. Building collapse down in Miami. We saw a presentation this evening of how the water can saturate into the city. And in doing so, that will have a tendency to undermine construction projects, starting from the lakefront back. The reason why I mention that is that when you agree for these projects, high-rise, particularly on the oceanfront, you know, I was in construction for 45 years, you must be mindful, engineers and all these people, they put on paper, they build it, but nobody knows Mother Nature like Mother Nature. So you just have to be careful about your approval. And it gets me to another point of construction in general. I born, I was born and raised in Pleasant City, grew up Pleasant City, been black for 73 years. And our neighborhood, community, Westwood, downtown Rosemary Avenue, Pleasant City, we fight to fight to keep our neighborhoods. And to have these massive structures and stuff going on in the communities and, and buildings built on this edge of the sidewalk is atrocious. You don't do that in no other neighborhood but in the black neighborhood. And when we get up here, the black folks get up there and talk about our disconcern, I mean, disapproval, we either militants, racists, or just not in touch with what's going on. The main thing about new construction is that everybody likes it. But the minute things go wrong, then no one knows what happened. Sure, I like construction. Like I said, I was in it for 45 years. But I know what's right and what's wrong with it. What happened in Pleasant City next to my house was not right. And I'm not going to drop it until I get a final answer and decision on why it was done. Because according to your own setback rules...
Thank you very much.
It wasn't done right.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, now we'll go to, we didn't have anything in the portal, did we? Okay. We'll go to comments from the Commissioners, and we'll start with you, President Paduzzi.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to give a quick shout-out to a local 501(c)(3) not-for-profit, Surface 71, which is a not-for-profit that's run solely by students. And they do beach cleanups, and they were responsible for installing water refill stations in 11 of our local schools. They held a Martin Luther King Junior Day of Service cleanup at our Curry Park on January 17th. And I believe that we picked up, it was 170...
174.
174 pounds of garbage, of trash, including a knife that my 11-year-old found with a 10-inch blade on it. So these, these cleanups are very important. It also, hopefully, you know, sheds, you know, light on a problem we have in our community with littering. But I want to thank Surface 71 for organizing this, this Martin Luther King Day of Service cleanup. And it was just incredible to see the students out there and how much trash was actually collected. So thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Shoff.
Thank you, Mayor. Wanted to make mention to Mr. Cleveland. I do have some answers on some things that you had contacted me about that I received from administration last week. So we'll follow up on some of those pressing questions that you have. Also wanted to send my condolences to the loss of a Pleasant City great, Ms. Clark, Ms. Everie Clark, who lived out loud. She was a great historian and actually, before I ever became Commissioner and reading up on, on neighborhoods, read her book about Pleasant City. And so she was very active in the community. Always had a Father's Day event for the community and was really a great advocate, not only for the entire city of West Palm Beach, but for Pleasant City. And she will be greatly missed. Want to extend an extremely big thank you, Mayor, to you, to your staff, to my fellow Commissioners on the dais for coming out to North End Community Update on Saturday. We barely dodged the raindrops, but got some great updates from Rise, who was a partner in North End Rise, Esperanza, the CRA, the North End Coalition of Neighbors, and just all around, brought City Hall out to the North End, and so appreciative. And I know we had a lot of neighbors out there that got to see some projects and some information that they wouldn't have otherwise gotten. I want to say congratulations to Ms. Bush and the MLK Coordinating Committee for another very successful MLK Day of Service. Just a reminder that the Coordinating Committee does much more than just one weekend in January. They have an incredible program for oratory competitions, book sales, any number of things. And I'm really excited this year that we previously have held our ribbon-cutting for the MLK Memorial in Curry Park, and that was revamped for the first time this year on MLK Day. Also, congratulations to PBC HRC on a successful winter fret. Had a lot of great people out and about to really celebrate the differences in our community and raise funds for a really great cause. So thanks to everyone and hope you have a great week.
Thank you. Commissioner Lambert.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to bring up a topic, and I know we had an item today that addressed some concerns with vacation rentals, but it seems that more and more vacation rental investors are buying up the housing stock in our neighborhoods. And it's, among other things, adding to the shortage of housing availability and oversaturation of vacation rentals in neighborhoods. And while I want to be mindful to not limit an individual's right to own a business, I do think that we need to make sure that we're keeping on top of how this is changing our neighborhoods and just continue to ask legal to help us stay on top of what other municipalities are doing. I know that we do have some limitations by state law on what we can do. But also, if we could provide any instruction to our residents to help them to rally to their state legislators, to help educate them on what our issues are here, I think that that would be helpful. And then finally, I just wanted to say thank you so much to our police chief and to the officers and to the code enforcement officers who came out to the Science Center last week. We had a very well-attended meeting where many residents came and had the opportunity to voice their concerns and hear directly from our police department on how we're addressing some public safety issues. And, and, you know, I was pleased to hear that, you know, a lot of the issues that were raised in the South End are things that we can get a hold of. And a lot of them, in fact, had to do with speeding and possibly some traffic engineering or traffic calming that could be added in the South End. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Warren.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to say congratulations to Commissioner Shoff for a wonderful event that took place. Thank you for being so conscientious, conscientious and bringing the staff, engaging the staff, to do something that was so meaningful in the community and provided so much information. There was a wealth of information that was available for everyone. And it took a great deal of thought and detail in order to coordinate that and provide the information on so many levels. So thank you for that and providing that blueprint so that we can do similar things throughout the city. I had the opportunity to go to Tallahassee for Palm Beach County Day. It was amazing, and I appreciate the background information that I received from Jennifer Ferriell, Armando Fana, and Rebecca De La Rosa that allowed me information that I needed in order to meet with our state representatives and our state senators to talk about very important legislation that affects our community. One of the things that I had the opportunity to speak about was rent control and really drilling down on the impact of the astronomical rises in rent in West Palm Beach. We really have to get our hands around that and do all that we can to have some form of regulation. But I was thankful to, I am thankful to Commissioner, to Palm Beach County Commissioner Mac Bernard and to Palm Beach County Director of Community Services, James Green, for taking me under their wing and partnering with me to speak with a lot of the representatives and senators to talk about the different issues impacting this immediate area. So thank you very much for that. And I would like to also say congratulations to Ms. Edith Bush, as well as the Martin Luther King Committee for an amazing event that they had. It's always... It's always fantastic. And just congratulations to you once again. I had the opportunity to meet with a gentleman by the name of Rich Anderson, who is the CEO of Peggy Adams. That, it's a nonprofit organization that has been around since nineteen twenty-five. And I toured the facility and they, they're continuing to grow. I was amazed when I, I visited to see that the wonderful care of the animals that were housed there, they were healthy and played and had a clean environment. And the only thing that they were missing was someone to love and someone to love them. So I encourage all of us to get involved with Peggy Adams and to recognize that there's so many ways that you can, you can serve. They have actually hundreds of volunteers, and they do foster care, they do so many different things to help with ensuring that these, these pets stay healthy and happy. And I want to ask everybody, if you have a home or a yard, adopt a big dog. Big dogs really need love too. They are just full of passion and love and they need somebody that they can call their own and a home that, that can be their own. So please, if you don't have weight restrictions, consider a big dog. And a big dog is one that I'm talking about that is about fifty pounds or heavier. We know that the small dogs are cute, but big dogs need love too. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Commissioner Fox?
Thank you so much. I also wanted to start out by congratulating Commissioner Shoff and all the city staff that was involved in putting on the event this Saturday. It was really fantastic, family-friendly. There was just so much great information. There was kids playing and their parents were going from booth to booth. I think one of the funniest things I heard was that most of the booths had, you know, some giveaways or candy for kids. And then when someone went to our engineering booth, they asked what they were giving away, and they said they were only giving away facts. So anyway, spoken like a true engineer, anyway. But it was a lot for the rest of us to live up to, I think. We, it's, you know, something that would be very beneficial for all of our districts to have those kind of events and just be able to interact directly with the people that are running our city and get their questions answered directly. So I thank you, Commissioner Shoff, for leading the way on that one. This Wednesday, January twenty-sixth, the CRA will be hosting their own event in the Historic Northwest. It will be a community meeting starting at six PM in the Heart and Soul Park and also will be broadcast on their Facebook page. So I would strongly encourage anyone who is interested in learning about some of the initiatives that are going on and the projects in the Historic Northwest to come out and also to tour the park, which is fantastic. My only, my final thing, I just wanted to ask Administrator Johnson, I know a few months back, we had our strategic planning session and that the consultants were working on putting together some final, I guess, recommendations or draft for us to look at. And I know you had mentioned it might be coming to us sometime early January. So I just wanted to ask if there was any updates. I've had a few questions from people, residents that, you know, remember when we did that session. So I just thought I would ask if there was any updates on a timeline.
Thank you, Commissioner Shoff. In fact, I got the final draft from the consultant on Friday, and I'm going through it. I have put a meeting on the mayor's calendar for he and I to review the final draft, and then it will be distributed out for the commissioners' review. And once we get that feedback from the commissioners, then we will finalize the strategic plan and determine how it would be distributed out from the air.
Thank you so much, and that's all I have.
Okay. Just a few things, again, Commissioner Shoff, congratulations for the event that you threw on, on Saturday. But I certainly want to give a special thanks to Administrator Johnson and all the city departments that were involved. You know, they took time out of their schedules to come out on a Saturday morning and set up booths. And so, staff, I really appreciate all that you did and Administrator Johnson for helping us get that organized. Would like to highlight the fact that four city projects or proposed projects are among seventy-six proposed projects comprising the governor's first-ever statewide flooding resilience plan, which is a three-year plan to protect Florida's coastal and inland communities. And subject to state appropriations, the city is on track to receive partial funding for a seawall elevation pilot project, drainage improvements on North Flagler, Curry Park stormwater improvements, and retrofits to a lift station. So that means dollars coming to our city from the state, don't have the exact amount in front of me, but that's a very good thing. I did, since, since the, the city and under my administration, we've really been making a conscious effort to become better at customer service. I did want to highlight a, a positive thing. We had a resident named Angela who lives in the Vedado Hillcrest neighborhood who contacted the city about some concerns she had about Vedado Park and the community center. So one of our park staff team members, Todd, met with her at the park, listened to her concerns, suggestions, and expectations. And she was very appreciative for that direct collaboration and wrote Todd a very nice note of thanks. And as we get, as we roll out a more robust customer service platform to replace eight-two-two, we're hoping that we can make even more direct connections and give people, our residents and businesses, a more direct entree to the city with a more efficient customer service response. I mentioned earlier during the moment of silence, Ms. Everie Jimison Clark, who passed away at the age of ninety-five. She, she really did a lot for the city during her time. I'm going to read a few of her accomplishments. And by the way, I did present to her family a tribute in the form of a proclamation at the viewing just prior to the funeral. She attended public schools in West Palm Beach and Jacksonville, and she was a survivor of the storm of nineteen twenty-eight. She was a historian of West Palm Beach African-American history and culture, which honors the pioneers of Pleasant City, the oldest African-American community in Palm Beach County. She was the founder and CEO of the Pleasant City Family Reunion Heritage Gallery. She was the author of books and programs for young people and adults. Fun fact, during Martin Luther King's famous "I Have a Dream" speech in Washington DC, she herself was integrating the dining room of the old Pennsylvania Hotel in downtown West Palm Beach. She founded and chaired the, something that was called the National Business League, which represented black businesses years ago. And she led the protest against making Tammeran Avenue four lanes, as she correctly predicted it would have eliminated many black businesses. She also organized a Pleasant City Economic Development Corporation, the South Florida Committee on Minority Affairs, and ran for city commission in nineteen seventy-three and seventy-four. So again, our condolences go out to Mrs. Clark's family and friends. She created a very lasting legacy here in our city, and which is a perfect segue that the city, to this next point, the city will be observing Black History Month in February with tons of free events at our library. And, and, and Ms. Clark is indeed a, a, a black pioneer. Black History Month celebrates the contributions made by African-Americans in the struggle for freedom and equality and deepens our understanding of our history. So you can learn more about these events on the city's website at W P B dot org. And that's all I have, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much.